Okay, welcome this February thirteenth, twenty twenty four to the committee of the whole and it's three, so we'll call meetings order. Do we have motion to adopt the agenda? Okay, second, any changes?
Could I just add a couple of quick things? I'll do a new business C O review, just to check in on that. It's a celebration of life for Brittany Swobodtillier, just a couple of questions about that. And B C did update, which should just be a moment, none of these are more than a minute, I think so, but I think it should be.
Yeah, it was an amendments, C O review and is that a beach ball? No, sorry, was it, sorry, what's it, you see that?
Oh, B C did, yeah, the stage book.
Okay, I can just suggest, yeah, not knowing the nature of the items, S T A on it. On it should be closed matter depending on not knowing what you want to talk about, yeah. And not knowing what you want to talk about with the B C bit thing, if it's sort of general terms you're fine. If it's more sort of detailed, you might want to do that in close.
Okay. It's just, it's a general thing and sure, I think this year review, yeah, maybe.
Okay, maybe also someone's wrong, but that was a lot more apologies.
Ready to pose, do you see a review and you should find one of the personnel metals. Who's in, you know, role or whatever the hell it is, I don't know about, but I don't know, someone needs to run it.
Okay. My recommendation too would be maybe the closed, well, I will all these manage to the end of the meeting.
Yeah, yeah, okay, anything else? Okay, all favor with the amendments, the agenda, opposed, motion carried. Okay, with that of a participation, okay, nothing in the, in the room here, how about online, Marina, any hands up? No, no, okay, we'll move to item number four approval of the minutes, so do we have motion to approve January ninth, twenty twenty four minutes?
So moved.
Second, second, okay, any edits, changes?
Um, I've got a comment as much, well, it's a question, I guess, on all of these. And maybe we need the C O to answer. So we seem to have gone to minutes that basically don't say anything, right? They just say we had a meeting about budget, that's all they said, is it? How many minutes are going to be in the future?
To you, thank you. Uh, so minutes is a bit of a misnomer, really, when, so minutes, the true iteration of minutes is verbatim. Verbatim minutes or minutes. Okay, what we do are meeting summaries, they're called minutes, but they're meeting summaries. So these meeting summaries are intended to capture the, the general essence of the discussion is not supposed to capture any necessary, necessarily detailed, unless that detail is, you know, important component, so there's judgment applied, I would, I haven't seen the minutes, but I would hope that there would be more than just, you know, a few words, I mean, so for instance supplemental, it would say, you're allowed, the, the three hall meeting. Staff presented a list of supplementals, there were questions and answers in relation to the following items, et cetera, et cetera. So it shouldn't be very brief, but it should be relatively brief, I don't know if that answers your question.
Um, I don't think there's minutes to what you just suggested, so you haven't reviewed the minutes?
No, are they, are there minutes on the agenda right now?
Yeah, there's four sets.
Oh.
Okay, why don't we go through the minutes just for, for, for time and we can either approve them or we can defer them. How would that be? Because I think we'll, or this is another topic to add to the agenda.
I think if we are going to do what, what you suggested, I think we should review these minutes. And then, so, because I would expect they had some sort of, we've discussed the supplementals, there was maybe some mixed opinions or something, they just said what we did, some of them purely saying we have a budget discussion.
Wow, so thank you, my recommendation is to table out the best until the next meeting, I was, I was hoping that that would not be on this agenda, it was spoken to specifically your budget stuff. So that's why I didn't see it, was I didn't expect.
No, we're on the previous agenda.
Right, so I will, I will have a chat with this Black and Arrow and we'll, we'll look at those minutes and we'll evolve.
Can we table them aloud to me, Mr. Blackwell, so, yeah, we can continue to table, should we put this on the agenda for further discussion on how we do minutes? Because if we continue to go off track like this in every meeting, we're going to run it over time. So if we don't get to the business of the village, we talk about procedures and that just continues on.
Uh, my recommendation is.
Did I say something here? Hello? Yes, Councilor Ryder.
Is it not the case, yeah, thank you, is it not the case that we need to approve committee of the whole minutes within a committee of the whole? That we cannot defer this to a regular council meeting, so for next Tuesday? That would be my understanding of it, so I would suggest that if we're going to have a discussion about minutes, that we do that at another time. But that if we're ready to approve these minutes as they are, we can always have another discussion about the nature and extent of minutes at another time, but I'm, I'm ready to approve them as they are.
Okay, uh, okay, any changes to the February or January ninth, twenty twenty four? I'll call a question, all in favor?
Yes.
Opposed?
Yes.
Motion carried. Okay, do we have a motion to approve May the ninth, twenty twenty three?
Yes.
Move, okay, second. All right, discussion edits.
Move.
Okay, I'll call the question, all in favor?
Yes.
Opposed? Okay, carried. Okay, motion to approve May the fourth, twenty twenty three.
Move.
Second, okay, edits, adjustments.
Move.
Okay, all in favor?
Yes.
Yes, opposed, carried. Okay, uh, motion to approve December eighth, twenty twenty two.
Question, is that really twenty twenty two?
Yes.
Yes, yeah, it is twenty twenty two.
We've been following your goal since December.
Okay, okay.
Okay, uh, we have a second.
Yes.
Okay, any edits, changes?
Yes.
Okay.
Or I don't know, changes, yes, I approve them.
Well, you weren't there, but.
No, I wasn't there, I read them.
Uh, Councilor.
You read them, okay.
Councilor, okay, sorry, Councilor, uh, Council brought me the hand up.
Um, the item number seven, uh, item number four, instead of interest, there were three extensions and there were only four people in the meeting, but, so it's kind of interesting, but I think that's because Counselor was the only counselor who was, was present on May third, twenty twenty third.
So you would extend an opening in this.
Right, okay, no one else, all of them.
Item four.
Item four, committee of the whole, May third, twenty twenty two. Anyway, sliding down a little bit further into the reports, it says that the following standing committees were established by Mayor Barry and those, number of those committees don't exist and they weren't established in that meeting as I recall, so I think that's incorrect, I think they were discussed and maybe brought forward, but, but they were not established per se, so I think the word established should maybe be replaced with discussed or something.
Or was it agreed to establish? Don't think we actually get approved with the same, exact same list in the next council, as a resolution.
I, I think it's a moot point because as we all know, the mayor has the legislative right to appoint who he would like and we establish that with discussions with the provincial advisor, so I think it's a moot point. Any other?
I think, I think it is a moot point, we, we did, we did affirm what is in these minutes in the following council meeting, so I would just leave it the way it is and move on with the budget here.
Okay, uh, any other changes in addition to Council vote?
Just noting that, that some of the committees that were created and did never were created, so it's, it's, I guess this effectively captures the special on December the eighth, twenty twenty two. So.
Yeah, if I could, committee of the whole can't establish anything, all it can do is report to council. So this doesn't, this cannot commit council of anything, it can only recommend to council.
Okay, okay.
If that helps. And then it went to council and so on, okay?
Okay, very much.
We did approve it in council.
Good, any other, any other changes?
Okay, I, I'm unclear here, are we, are we now moving to approve the minutes as presented?
Yes.
We're moving to approve the minutes as Counselor Proton has suggested, which is changing established to recommended. Okay, all in favor, are we? I'll call the question, all in favor?
Yes.
Opposed, motion carried, yeah. Okay, um, was there one more minute, so I can do this electronic, see one? Uh, that was, okay, business arising from that. Business, oh, okay, unfinished business, item number six, and we'll pass it over to uh, Mr. Blackwell to give us an intro and then over to Mr. Chirkov.
Thank you very much, so I will reiterate what I've been seeing really, which is just a reminder, primarily for the community that may be tuning in. Just a reminder that this is effectively, you might as well call it a three-part process. Uh, part one is a discussion of the core budget, which are the established services and so forth, uh, which council has done and made a preliminary decision with regard to a tentative tax increase. Uh, part two is a discussion of all of the supplemental items, these are sort of one-off items that are, have, were presented to council by each of the department heads last Tuesday. Um, today is the opportunity for council now to pour over those and decide what's on the table and what's off the table. And that will lead to part three, which is bringing those two halves together, the core budget and the supplemental budget and council weighing in with regard to fine tuning where it wants to finish up relative to that combined core supplement. Of course, that will dictate what a potential tax increase might look like for some of these supplemental capital items, how they're going to be funded, whether they be funded from reserves or through taxation, et cetera, so these are all sorts of decisions that council will make during that part three, following part three. Um, hopefully council will have moved that discussion to somewhat of, of kind of finality on that, so that when it, it will be in a position to make a presentation to formal council. So it will then go over for formal council to the final consideration and then it'll go through bylaw or a, a, a formating bylaw adoption process, which will be three readings at one meeting and then a, a final reading adoption. Uh, the following meeting, so that's sort of the, the brief overview with regards to the deeper dive. And Mr. Chirkov will run you through quickly what you are facing again today, starting with the biggest ticket items, uh, going down to the smallest ticket, I believe Counselor Brightbrowton has a, a few additional sort of items that are are, I think they're kind of emergent matters, and Mr. Chirkov does as well. Um, something that we discussed in closed last week that we can't really talk about in much detail um, with regard to supplemental, if you recall. Uh, that's all on the table today, if you need to talk about that item that was discussed last week in close, uh, I suggest you do so, assuming when this meeting goes into close at the end, move into that end part and have a discussion there. So with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Chirkov.
So, um, I, I want to deal with here, this is the on the flip back important year package, but that's the H fifty-three rip package, the capital requests for twenty twenty four. It's ordered in line of magnitude, uh, starting with the fire truck going down to thousand bucks for some drywalling and village office from the patient, uh, so I thought we both from top to bottom here. Um, so some new information for the fire truck. Um, the primary, one of the primary reasons for her, um, request this year for a new fire truck uh, was that it could possibly impact, um, the fire writers under, um, under a survey uh, which are presenting homeowners and insurance costs. Um, can, uh, our chief Barrett has received response from the F U S and confirmed that, um, we do actually fall under a small village exemption. So we actually can keep our, our truck till twenty thirty, um, and maintain the same our average.
Um, sorry, sorry if I could, we have the potential, but yeah, there, there would be annual testing, lots of allegations around that, but there, at least it's an option to extend its lifespan until then.
Um, it would require to keep that reading, annual, uh, testing and certification is about four thousand dollars and forty-five hundred dollars a year for that kind of testing to be done. Um, so that is one consideration to take into account when, uh, considering, uh, uh, replacing the fire truck this year and the previous recommendation by staff was that would be financed through a loan with, um, MFA.
Can I ask a question about the, you know, maintenance, would that start twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five?
Every single year thereafter until twenty twenty thirty, so you'd have a recurring, yeah, for, to recertify.
Sort of like the MFA Joe, for those that are listening in that don't know MFA is. Joe, MFA is.
You'd be a long time before you.
And they provide.
Uh, lending to this values.
That's, I think that's, it's for next year, right? Because it would be, it'll be fifteen years older next, uh, year after next.
Yes, we can keep it till twenty thirty, um, and then at that point we're done with it.
Right, right, but the actual testing won't start until next year, it won't be, it won't be into its.
Yeah, it's my understanding.
Twenty fifteen, yeah, it's twenty fourteen, it's fourteen years now, it'll be fifteen next year.
So that's, it starts when it's fifteen, yeah.
So, um, I guess that's a conversation that should be had right now, would you, would council like to pursue replacement of our truck, uh, let it have as about a year or more if we order now? Um, another option would be to play with recertification, incur an annual cost for recertification, which we built into the budget, thirty-five hundred dollars a year, basically, I mean, this cost. Um, and in that scenario, my recommendation would be that we do add a contingency to the budget and add some money to a future replacement cost, I'd say fifty thousand dollars a year. Um, such that, you know, thirty, when we do have to replace it, if it's not replaced now, that we have some money reserved for the new fire truck. Uh, while we council to discuss.
So if I could just add to that, so here's the fundamental question for council, when the time comes to replace that truck, it's roughly one point three million dollars now in ten years, if we're spitballing, you know, based on the, the expected increase. What's the word?
Inflation. Inflation.
Inflation.
Um, this is not time at all induced, forget what was that number? Uh, it is probably getting close to one point five million, so if your council sets aside fifty thousand, you have to do so knowing that you are probably going to be in a position where you're going to have to find a million dollars in ten years. So the question is.
How long?
For six years, twenty thirty is when it's, sorry to interrupt, but.
No, thank you, were we, I guess, yeah, and four, six, six, yeah, sorry, yeah, right, that, but. So, um, you know, ultimately it's how much can, relative to all of the other competing interests, how much can council justify setting aside in anticipation of an eventual purchase of plus one point three million somewhere. So, you know, normally what council would do with, with major investments like this is we refer to your um, asset management plan and you, that, that, that's effectively your core budget together with other things and you set aside enough for replacement. Here or take, I mean, there's, there's a few other considerations, you may take that to seventy percent and you rely on the rest, the thirty percent for grants and doing some things, I mean, that's, if you're there, what is your tolerance for that? So that's, that's certainly crossover, which council needs to consider or contemplate in setting aside money.
All right, we still have our interest on this, it's complicated off.
Can I just step back and just try and understand these numbers, so many tables, I thought I understood them last time, but I didn't read all the way down to the bottom. So they each have amortization to one of, um, and one of, uh, two hundred and forty months and one of a hundred and eighty months. And then each alone just amount, and then there is residual value, yeah. So are we saying, if you look at, of the two, you know, two hundred and forty months of amortization, in terms of sixty months, so that's five years. But at the end of it, the truck can have a residual value of a million dollars. So we don't, we don't, we're not buying this truck over the five years, we're buying, this is, this is almost like a lease thing, right?
It's, uh, well, we're expecting to use it for twenty, you're not going to, you know, refinance it, you're going to sell the truck.
With the refinancing issue.
Yeah, well, at the end of that.
And if I only allows you to finance new vehicles.
It's a.
So they won't lie to you, so what would you do when you're at the end of the five years?
Well, that's a good question, I don't have an answer for you for that right now, but.
So I thought, when we discussed this before, my ask was, and I thought that's what I was looking at, but clearly I didn't. Be careful now, you can get a loan from MFA for fifteen or twenty years.
Yes, yeah.
A flat out loan, we own the truck at the end of it.
Yes.
I think that's the number we were looking for.
I guess.
Zero money, there aren't zero residual value, we paid for it in, in fifteen years, then becomes our second truck, and we're going to be doing that. Or as long as the village has a fire, I guess, but, but that should be one other way of looking at it.
Would they give you a term for that one, or would they make you a referendum?
According to their website, you can get loans up to twenty-five years.
Yes, that's great.
Um, but the difference is we'd have to go out to the public and get approval.
That's correct.
So I don't think we should be trying to avoid public approval ever, and certainly not in this case, I think we should, we need that number.
I think we're looking at a fifteen-year, um, amortization period because that was the expected service length of the truck and then at the end of it, you sell whatever is residual value in the fighting truck. Um, that was the end of the first.
It sounds like a risky strategy to me, but now I'm relying on being able to find someone that wants to buy my five-year-old truck for a million, one point one million bucks, that sounds like a risky strategy.
You know, because this, this strategy, you know, like this, that's the standard practice. Where you buy the truck outright and you relegated to a second-line truck and then you exited out of your fleet. At that point, even when they have low kilometers, it'll be not worth it. Right, that, when they're certainly at the end of their first lifespan, even as a second-line, first-line truck, they're not worth very much money, which is why you might as well keep them for a second-line truck. But certainly when that lifespan is done, as they say, it's worth nothing. Um, just to emphasize the point, this, primarily for folks listening in, uh, and maybe I would ask Joe to weigh in on this, weigh in on this, it's an important consideration for council with anything that council chooses to decide to fund for five years or longer. And that is, that it has to be, it has to go to public approval process, either through an alternate approval process, which I'll get into, or referendum. Uh, did Joe, did you want to add anything further on that?
Just a sort of, we've done, uh, the, the village has done the ultimate process in this funding, um, uh, a lot of infrastructure, uh, it is twenty, I was like six years ago, there was referendum.
Yeah.
And, uh, so that.
We did all, that we did, ultimate approval process was on the whole, I am looking at the inventory. Referendum for infrastructure was approved.
Oh, yeah, that, that would be, I presume the process we go through again, uh, so the, the town period, there's a going through referendum, there is a time period for, uh, process, you know, it's going to look to about almost four months. Um, but, you know, that being said, we're still, uh, a year, maybe, maybe a year and a half out if we buy a truck this year from, uh, uh, purchase to delivery. Um, so if there is an appetite by council to, um, to fund a new truck this year, put a referendum um, and, uh, obtain other approval, um, and, uh, starts confirming your supplier, uh, that you have something.
But it'd be easier to do the referendum the next election as opposed to mid-stem, mid-stem bottom.
Bottom line is, my recommendation to council is to kick this down the road, you know, you have some other very big projects like the highway tank replacement project, that is a potential big one that's looming. Um, I think the data is still being collected to confirm what it's looking like, but it's looming. You know, this, this recent information that Mr. Chirkov has presented with regard to the, the small communities designation means you have some breathing room. That said, use that breathing room wisely is my recommendation, I could certainly set aside money for the future acquisition, the question for council is how much?
So that doesn't have any plus, setting that fifty thousand aside each year, just goes into another allocation.
Into reserves.
Into reserves, okay.
And we will get, collect interest on those reserves as well.
And eventually we will have to deal with this in any way, so.
If you do it long enough, you'll, in, in, in trust of buying a new truck, just kidding, I think that was accounting humor.
Socialism.
Yes.
So we're just going down the side, you know, tonight, but.
Why was it coming?
Moving in that direction, any, any other questions on this?
Um, yeah, I'm okay with that idea, that would be, we have some time, but we certainly don't want to kick it down the road for five years and find out and do this properly. So, but I think we should, at another time, continue the discussion, get the additional options, using the other option of bring to market, keep buying ten-year-old trucks, seeing the other firewalls of that, from what I understand. Um, like assessment firewall and animal, which is, of course, is comparable, so I think we need more information and come up with a strategy and I guess we don't have to do it tonight.
Yeah, correct, if I may, I need to picture, I'll finish the thought, I, I, Chief Barrett has been, you know, works for Westland Fire Department and they have a history of recycling the trucks, given that we, um, do have a twenty-year life on ours, because we're small. Um, perhaps that may be an option, you can, or, or you can get an option of some of our firefighters.
Well, they have to get rid of the trucks, they have to get rid of the trucks in ten years, we can use the next ten years and it's totally.
Fifteen, and they have fifteen years.
They have a trade at sports stars for.
They have fifteen years on their truck, we have another ten years up to twenty-five.
So they're ten, I mean, ten, we saw last week.
Is it, oh, okay, I won't weigh in, I thought it's fifteen.
Maybe I don't know, anyway, I can, just one, one last thought, um, I thought from, from the fire chief compared his email, that he was suggesting we do the test now and not wait another year, so that we, we know, we, if we do the test next year, if it fails the test, then we group. Then we have any time to do it, does that make sense?
What's the cost of the past?
Five million.
Yeah, so if I could, you know, this is an inexact science, in theory, you should have no issues with, with this, with the pumping test, in theory. I mean, so I've gone through this in Campbell, in, where was I last, Fort Harding. Uh, this is very same thing before I kick it down here, what do we do with these trucks and pump tests and so forth? They have them tested every year, now they're in that regime, they passed. But there's no guarantee they will, and if they don't, we don't know how long they test by and for, before they do give up the ghost. And if they do give up the ghost, what should be done in terms of repairs to reestablish those pump performance? So these are all really big question marks, um, and, and you don't have to decide, this is a beauty, you don't have to decide all those details now. Uh, but I think this is something that staff should come back to council with, is deeper dive into the mechanics of resolving this big ticket question around, uh, fiber tech for the community.
Okay. All right, any questions?
All right. Any questions? Any other questions? Okay, Joe, that'll move on. Next item. Uh, the next item on that list on page fifty-three is the Lions Bay Beach Park Re-mentalization Project. Today, we spent eighty-one thousand dollars on that and so they claimed to have, yeah, rented the plant. Um, they're, I believe they're given original budget, given remaining cost of nine hundred and eight thousand dollars. Um, which we have seventy-three percent funding for. However, I would believe that Council Row has some comments regarding uh, in changing in scope of the project.
Okay, um, currently there is a scope change request in with the ministry and we expect that back anytime actually. And the project has gone up to bid and there were five, at least five potential people who responded to the B C bid mandatory site visit today. So that was, that was great. And so going forward, I mean, this will be closing on the, on the twenty-seventh of February. Uh, we will be bringing some recommendations to the January, February twentieth meeting regarding process and and selection process and so on. So it's not a committee to hold a discussion. But in terms of, of the operation and management of this, I'm hoping that we can consider putting aside uh, project contingency to make sure that, that we have the the project management capacity and the uh, there may be some issues with the septic that, that could, could cause some, cause some issues. So I think something in the neighborhood of, of probably something around thirty thousand dollars, maybe a project contingency that considered by council and just give staff the authority to, to manage this and, and and operate this.
Mr. Blackwell, is this something, this a recommendation from Council Row and this will go to council? Or is this something where?
So my recommend, so let me jump into this by saying that it's always been practiced to have contingency. I would argue a minimum, if you're, if you're confident, a minimum of ten percent is the minimum you'd want to look at for contingency. If you know all of the, yeah, I'm saying, you know, the perfect world, right? But we're not dealing with the perfect world there. I think we, we are fairly confident. Carl is fairly confident. Carl is fairly confident, but not a hundred percent confident. So it's wise to have a little bit of money set aside should we bump into things that we did not expect and we have to resolve them. It's better to be forearmed with that flexibility, generally speaking. Uh, with regard to those specific asks, uh, that Council Row just articulated, these are emergent issues that have popped out. Uh, I think it is wise to set aside these funds to accommodate those things to make sure this, the project functions as efficiently and effectively as it can. I stand to be corrected, but as I understand it, because of inflation and so forth, the budget associated with revitalization is almost entirely consumed with delivering the projects. It's eaten up all of what was once contingency. And so council now, and I stand to be corrected, that's as I understand it, in which case, I think it'd be wise to consider setting aside a little bit of money, should that be.
So again, will this go to council? Make that, or can we do it now?
Yeah, these are supplemental requests. So it would be two. One supplemental request would be, well, you can do it separately or do it together, that there be a contingency set aside as a supplemental. Actually, that's probably investment for the beach park project to cover off these emergent.
So do we need a motion now?
No, just factor that into your discussions.
Okay, and that'll come into the whole budget, I think.
So we suggest me an additional number, a project of one point oh seven hundred million.
That would be my recommendation.
Which we haven't even got a price on yet. It has a twenty-five percent contingency. You only have a quarter million dollar contingency. If you look at the last time the budget estimate was shared with us, you only have a quarter million dollars contingency. And then we suggest council needs to add more.
Well, so I can't speak to those details. My understanding was that contingency was allocated for the construction. Is utilized that because of the, the impacts of inflation. But I stand to be correct and I cannot tell you that with certainty. But if that is, as I understand it, then you essentially have no functional contingency, in which case you should probably establish them for the reasons that will be stated.
And Council Row, any further detail or counsel?
Uh, I, I think we, we, we have this up to bid and we'll have a lot more information once, once the bids have come in. Bits will come in, you know, deadline is twenty-seven of February. And, but in terms of, you know, possible operational costs to the village and so on, I think it, it just would make some sense to have a little bit later on.
Okay, so you've given us a heads up.
Okay. Can I jump in here?
Yeah, Councilor.
Uh, thank you. I'm having a degree of discomfort with approving further uh, money on this project in the absence of having seen, uh, you know, fulsome reports that would justify and explain where we're at on the project in detail. Um, and to justify adding further funding to this. I, I'm, I'm having real trouble with that. I, I believe there was a built-in contingency and if there's more required, then I would expect to be uh, having a report in front of me that would make the argument for that. So I'm having a degree of discomfort in adding more dollars to this figure for this project without those according materials at this time.
Yeah, I think you're receiving a heads up. I think we're having larger discussions here about other, other matters as well. So I think this is important that we'll see council be aware of this, but I don't think they're admitting to this this evening. So.
Can I, because in one way, I agree, I'd like to see how, how we got to this number. I'm looking at the, the last estimate was ever shared with us, the one that was submitted for the grant. It has two hundred and fourteen, two hundred and fourteen thousand dollars of contingency. It still has, it has all the stuff in the project that at that time, I believe there's already some of the stuff that you removed, something was mined. Um, it's going out to bid now, it cannot possibly, can't possibly go out to bid on something and decided you already used all your contingency. That makes no sense at all. Um, that's just not how things work. So I would like to see before we do anything on this, when we consider approving additional funds into the beach park, that someone gives us an accurate revised estimate on the same basis of the one we got before, shows where this is going. And I, and I think we should get this project back under budget. Obviously, I know what I'm doing.
Okay, uh, Council, kind of for, Council Row, any comments? So you've given us a heads up. We need more information.
Yeah, well, more information will be coming rapidly.
Okay, great. All right, we'll move on. Page two. Uh, thank you. Um, page twenty-seven of your package that refers to the highway tank replacement. That's made a cost of one million dollars, of which a hundred thousand was approved to be the budget priority. Um, so we're looking for additional funding with the current year, nine hundred thousand dollars. Um, do you have any further things that you want to say about that?
Yeah, so this is a moving target, this project. We have been working hard and long to validate, corroborate, verify, to exactly know what the word is. That it is in fact the highway tank that is the cause of our most pressing problem. Um, strategic or tactical problem this year, that is leakage remediation. The highway tank needs replacement. The last dive inspection, you've seen the report, it was fairly detailed. It, it, it does need to be removed and replaced with another tank or with, with a pressure reducing valve. Does it need to be done in time for this summer's unprecedented water shortage? We don't know yet. Um, we believe that we have two hundred, one hundred and ninety-eight thousand gallons a day of floor leakage below the highway tank. When I say floor, I mean baseline, not the floor of the highway tank, which may itself be leaking. We don't know. We're about to, on Thursday, hydrovac its outlet so that we can install clamp on metering to find out why is this important or why does council need to know this? You have a technical committee that hasn't met since mid-November. Um, they would normally come to you with a recommendation on this, but you haven't seen that recommendation or there haven't been one. So I'm telling you now. We don't yet exactly know the cause of the leakage, but two hundred thousand gallons a day is the best part of half of our winter time consumption and a third of our summertime consumption. So it's a significant number. We need to find out what it is. Um, and we're working on that hard. What I do need to do on that project for absolute sure is proceed with the design. Um, you saw at the last meeting, the whole meeting, uh, an estimate from the engineers for around thirty-five thousand for the preliminary work. I imagine the rest of the work will cost about that again. That number has already been approved by council last year in a hundred thousand. And so at the very least, I, I would like to know that I can actually push the button on that well before the budget's final approval in mid-April. The, the fourth reading, the, the three readings and adoption that Ross mentioned. There's one or two other projects that need to move ahead before then, but this is one of them. Um, and so I would actually be bringing a recommendation to, to council next week to pre-approve this. So that we can get the engineers done. So if it turns out that the highway tank does need to be remediated, we're ready.
Carl, is the engineering to replace it with the PRVs?
They will be checking the hyd, the, they, they will rerunning the hydraulic model to see if that will suffice in terms of required pressures for fire flow, in terms of service pressures, uh, high and low locations, obviously the higher, the lower your water pressure. Um, the likelihood is that, and it's good news, is that we will do two PRV stations. Each station comprises two PRVs, one for fire flow and one for vertical service. It will come in well under a million dollars if we do that, because it will be in a above ground chaos, although I said we'll never do another one. This one is tucked away, out of the way, out of sight. It's a fine opportunity to do another above ground chaos, single chaos, uh, with droppings getting out of PRV units. Uh, it'll be a lot cheaper than the, the million dollars, I believe, but I won't know. And so it's too late to do it in time for the summer, if it is.
How do you test the leakage? Are you just rubbing around the tank, just connecting pipe coming around the tank?
Uh, no. Um, how we know there is leakage is by looking at, at the slope of the feed into the tank which comes out of the Harvey tank, which is metered. This tank is not metered. We now need to install a temporary meter on it by exposing its outlet by, um, finding out what it is, because the records don't exist. The tank was built in fifty-nine. It's either two and a half, three or four inches. Maybe, maybe six, but we think four. And then specifying a meter and then we know for sure. We, we already know. We already know that the floor flowed through it between one and four in the morning, which is defined to be leakage in winter, whether or not actual leakage into the ground or strange consumption. That's about two hundred thousand gallons a day, days worth. Which is a significant portion of our day consumption throughout the. Um, so.
So you immediately flow into the tank and out of the tank.
Correct. So that's how we're going to know what the tank's doing.
So instead of that million dollars, you're looking at just design fees.
Well, now I have, I need the design fees. Yeah, I need the design fees. Yeah, roughly a hundred, but probably less. I need that yesterday. I, I need to press the button on, on that design.
Um, just back to a given point, I mean, you could actually jump around the tank if you had the right valve in and that would be the hundred percent guarantee. You know what the water tanks need.
We.
So it is another way of moving it, is actually correct.
Uh, yeah, we, we could dig up, tap in, supplying, supplying the houses, the hundred and eight houses below would be a bit of an issue.
Yeah, because you have a pressure problem. Of course, you can't do it.
We have two pressures on.
No pressure, but you can, you have, you need a break tank, otherwise the pressure.
Okay, well, how we would do is we'd have to install a temporary PRV station as well. It's more than just.
It's too complicated.
There is a bypass already. We, we could do that today.
So are we, are we reviewing the previous design? I asked you this before.
Yes.
Okay.
So we're halfway there already.
Okay, yeah, because half the engineering is done. Because I have two PRVs and a break tank. You just can make sure, can we remove the break tank? What do the PRVs look like combined?
Correct. So the engineering is half done, which is why I'm again pretty confident that we can come in well under the original estimate of a hundred for the engineer. But I need to spend that money.
Did I hear you say that there is a bypass?
No, there isn't. We can bypass the tank, but it's more complicated. But I need to go back to, there's no PRV between
Right.
the tank and, and.
What my concern is, is, is that we're not a hundred percent sure that this is where the problem is. The problem could be, the leakage could be somewhere else.
Below the tank, yeah.
Below the tank. Um, that was replaced a number of years ago. It's one of the youngest piping in the village, I believe, below the tank, right?
Yes.
It's fifteen years old, whatever that is.
Yeah.
So, um, I guess my, my concern, I'm really concerned that, that the leakage gets dealt with. If we deal with this, if it, if it's wrong and we, we spent a lot of money on it and we still haven't fixed the leak, then, then what is the next step?
There's only one person more concerned than you, and that's me on that exact question. Uh, we, we obviously, we, we have one opportunity, both in terms of funding and time, to fix the, the lion's share, the best leak fixes we can do. So we have in the last week been working pretty hard and we think we have some clues where that water is going, which I can't discuss.
Why couldn't you run it for four hours, divert it for four hours at night?
Because you need, you can't, you haven't got a PRV, and if you tend to break tank out, all the houses on the lines, wherever you've been, the waste was pretty short, the pipes.
But it'll shut it back.
We can't, we can't stop people, we can't shut down the water because then the.
You should have all the water lines that have been turned.
The even.
No, because the pipes might run dry if they're leaking and then we have a lot of health issues.
Then you, then the pipes running dry, outside water goes back into the pipe.
And then you're out for two, three, four weeks until we have to fornicate and then people won't know that we're not finished having to fornicate and then they'll drink the water and then.
They shut it completely in here, paper it down.
The cold, cold idea of, of meeting the, that and below the tank with a pan, on the panel, we just will answer the question if it's the tank.
If it's the tank. We really know that.
If it was not a tank, then we'd go and be a problem in.
It's below the tank, yes. And as I said, I think we have some ideas there, privacy reasons that are not part of discussion here open. What I need out of the budget discussion is a go ahead on engineering.
But didn't we approve it last year?
That's what I'm asking. I, you know, I don't know. We, we certainly council approved a hundred thousand.
Got a hundred thousand.
Which we approved previously for this problem. So you got, you done.
If I could, if it's pre-approved, I would say technically, technically probably able to just go ahead and edit.
Yeah.
Yeah, council is uneasy with that, which shouldn't be, because it's pre-approved. Then you can, you can give preapproval on, of this spend on, on this.
They give council. There is sort of re-releasing those funds in the same hood.
So can you check and see if it's pre-approved? But if it's a design, anyway, that's much less than a million, so.
So you usually ask the council, if this is pre-approved and fits what Carl's asking, will council agree to the fact that you're comfortable with the money that's already been allocated for this premise to be spent?
Yes. Which, yeah, which is roughly going to be thirty thousand.
Starting with thirty and then the full is going to probably be another thirty, depending on how much they can reuse it if the work was done six, seven, eight years ago.
And so we'll go past what's already been approved. Anything beyond that that's been approved would be function with this budget discussion.
So this is going to need to happen down the road at some point, that we're just trying to decide, yeah.
It won't, it won't be money wasted, that's for sure.
Won't be wasted.
I also know the tank is probably going to have to be replaced with another PRV station. That's probably going to be the correct technical solution.
Definitely.
It is failing. The, the issue is, is that the money we want to spend to address the tactical problem by end of July?
We have a bigger problem, yeah.
So another solution for that might be the crash premise metering program. To put as many houses on metering as we can, not for billing purposes, for leak detection purposes. So that we can trace where this, this leakage is going. As you correctly pointed out, most of our water mains are in actually pretty good shape. We don't think it's the mains themselves, we know it's service line leaks, we just found another one today, about twenty-five thousand gallons a day. Broken polybutyl line. We, I have three letters to send out tomorrow to advise three more people that they have leaks. The problem is, as I'm sure you all know, there's a lot of denial when it's private side leak, because it's expensive to fix. You think we'll spot fix it for five grand or replace your entire line for pointy. That's a lot of money to ask people to do, so people resist. Coming will be a report that will address some of the the tools that we will need as we approach potential. Red regime, as I've decided to call it. To shut people down, et cetera, et cetera, but that that's. Part of the budget discussion. So. What's the best use of a million dollars? Can't quite answer that question yet. I will be able to answer it probably this time next week. We have, we have two hydrovac projects tomorrow and. Thursday. So that we'll know where our two big suspects are, the the tank and another location.
So the tank's gonna be done within a week, you're saying?
I I will know.
We should know to get the the tank within a week.
Yeah.
Can I jump in here for a minute?
Yes, Councilor Rutter.
Thank you. Just want to remind everyone that in the last package, there was a. An invitation in the IC package, in the IC recommendations, if if council has any technical. Questions they wanna draw from or want some answers to, there was the invitation there. That that someone could attend and answer those questions. And they'd be happy to field an expert in, and we could discuss it further. As to where we throw all our eggs. In this thing, I do look forward in terms of a big spend like this to appearing. Further, that's whether it's a tank or it's further below. In the sense that we have limited dollars to draw around, I'd like to see them thrown where they can do a little bit. And to determine hopefully as best as we can, whether it is the tank leaking or whether it is, whether there are leaks downstream of there. I think there are also some other areas where we should be replacing pipes. So, yeah, I I look forward to more information on that.
Can I ask that we have a little bit more clarity on what what the costs are going to be on this plan? I know you're saying it's thirty-five, maybe another thirty-five, and but then we ballpark it at a hundred, can you just get a little more clarity on that?
Okay, so, yes, I can, I can find what this part B will be. I I provided the proposal to council last week on on A, which is the the initial scoping, the hydraulic model rerun. So that they can understand what the design would look like, then they can proceed to design it. That's thirty-four thousand dollars. I need them to do that. So that we know where we stand. That is not wasted funds, did we need to spend them this year un-grant supported, perhaps not. The tank has to be replaced. If if it's not necessary to do it by summer, then perhaps we have two or three years to do it, we can potentially. Put it in the way of some grant funding, which will help, it's not happening to be completely tax fair funded, whether a dent or immediate taxation. So, yes, a short answer, I will be able to, I will know. Within the budget cycle, what the remainder of the design will cost, however, I already know it's gonna be well less than a hundred thousand. Which has been pre-approved, previously approved for the purpose.
Okay, any other questions?
No, I'm good, and we know, as soon as you get the thirty-four going, no, then we need to decide not to do the design.
Precisely.
To to Marcus's point about the invitation in, assuming that came from that RFD, this is a budget package. The invitation, there's someone from the. The infrastructure committee coming in to discuss this. I would suggest this is gonna be a discussion on Thursday night. At the infrastructure committee meetings.
So I will be presenting data to the committee.
So if anyone would like to hear firsthand, you could call in or come join us. Simplifying the discussion on Thursday night.
If you like that kind of stuff, yeah.
Yeah. And I and I think the other suggestion about the expert from the committee. Might more have been an expert on the. On the issue with the city water.
Water quality.
Water quality stuff, that was, that's not an expert.
Yeah, this, in this case, we're talking about order. Quantity, and that's a, that's a different matter.
Okay, thanks for that. Sure, next time.
About the twenty-eight dollar package, the entire water drainage project. Funded it for five hundred thousand dollars. You know, we all, I think we presented that supplement the last week, if we're there any questions regarding this.
Sorry, if I could.
Yeah.
I don't know how council wants to be proceeding, this one, you've got down all of this list. I don't know whether you wanna. Sort of make a decision as you go down, in terms of what you want. Tentatively included as the going forward, that is just not gonna be carved in stone. But it's, you you'll separate one by one, line by line, which is all contained, which is all. That's the extent of the decision making. Take this time to exclude things you you know right off the bat, that you don't wanna move forward for that discussion.
Recommend for discretion to come to council to approve.
Well, for that core supplemental, right, discussion. So you'll shave off the stuff right out of the gate you don't like.
We do.
We did, I think.
Line by line.
Yeah.
We are doing this.
So the fire truck is down to potential. Property like fifty thousand a year set aside. Beach park is asking for a little bit more contingency, which we need further clarity. The highway tank is, we're at thirty-five thousand plus another thirty-five, we're up at seventy to a hundred. So that's different from the million.
Eyes are there, though, if it is determined that it is. The best bank for the buck. Water supply situation, then we'll need to spend.
Million bucks.
The full monthly.
Wow, one less than a million, but yeah.
Less than a million, I I I'm not promising any numbers now, but. Three quarters of them. I'm not promising, I I would say nothing. But it will be less than a, two PRVs plus, so that's.
So two period. And it's it's possible that there'll be enough information at the next meeting that.
You know, I, yes, I I'm not making promises, because, you know, things change all the time, we discovered five new things when when we didn't need to. But we won't just, we won't be doing it until we know for sure. I think in some cases it will be a leap of faith, and I don't know that I could.
Mr. Blackwell.
You may well wanna not spend too much more time on this topic, there's nothing more that you can solve.
Figure out, right, okay, over to Mr. Chirkoff.
And he's twenty-eight. And tide water drainage, construction dividers, here's a pipe. High priority.
Well, you know, it's one of those ones that's been a high priority for some time. It's cost to remediate is not increasing by the the CPI. It's increasing by multiples every year because it gets worse. More, more substrates getting eroded. The road is in far worse conditions such that it might need to be rebuilt rather than just re-hashballed it. So these kinds of road drainage culvert type projects are. They just get worse at a logarithmic rate, exponential rate rather than linear rate, so. You know, this would be done after the summer. It would need to be designed fairly well, but you know, a lot of it would be done in the field. It. Something we can do this year, and and we'll have to do at some point. I remind you that we have the gas tax fund sitting there that needs to be spent. The idea had always been that the gas tax was to be spent on road type projects, well, this is one.
Which is on the gas tax?
It's that issue.
Oh.
And other road projects.
Sure, just one comment, my my concern would be, are we capable of executing on these, on these various projects? We we have the pride trail underway, we've got the clap building, the beach park. And then we're looking at the highway as a highway, either fixing or replacement, tide water drainage. You know, do we have the ability to execute, and if not. I feel more comfortable deferring and and even though we'd love to get as many of these projects done. You know, how do we, how do we solve that from?
Well, in in the operating budget is a proposition for another headcount that is specifically project manager. That you've seen the specs for. So that is part of the deliberation, and and you, yes, you're absolutely right. I could not deliver these, I I make eight capital projects. In one year. Without dedicated project manager.
So if I could, let's follow. So you basically have two options. Hire a project manager, pay wholesale. Forty plus hours a week. Hire a project manager from market, play retail. And you get what you get relative to the charging of it. One is more tactical perhaps than the other, but either way, what's key in these projects is to build in, build in a value for to cover a constant project manager. Whether that is. The employee or whether it's a consultant project manager. That has to be in a part of the budget, typically, frequently it's not, which is. Head scratching. I'm not saying Carl, I'm saying generally in the world, it's not uncommon to find that the project manager piece is not factored into the cost of delivering the project. But I think that there is, this is an important discussion for council to have. Is around how do we manage all of the projects now and going into the future.
Yeah, I I I absolutely agree, and and that's why I I would like to consider an in-house or contracted project manager. Because then we can start leapfrogging projects and and not having to re-stage, they're not looking at projects in isolation, they're actually. Considering that as a whole, with with all of our resources, our human resources, our monetary resources. Priorities, so that so that we actually get, again, more bang for the buck. Which is why I do kinda wanna do all of these in sequence or something, even if they're a lot, because they tie in, they use the same kind of machine, same resources, same designers, same same everything.
Is there any way to give, and Mr. Blackwell, to could discuss that? Look it out a little bit more.
Where we can do.
It's rude, it's the best.
Yeah.
Whether it's consultant or in-house.
Yep.
Another thing I'll add is if you have an in-house. Project manager, it's another staff position you're placing, right? And and yes, it's coming to you wholesale, but you have to buy the full two thousand and eight hours a year, two thousand and eighty hours.
Whether you need them or not.
Whether you need them or not, right, or then you can finally make the projects for him. And also. If you're a grant project and you hire a project manager. As long as you stay under the fifteen percent of consulting fees. You're getting, you're getting that benefit, whereas you've got someone sitting in the office, you're not. So there's a whole bunch of ways to look at it, but we need to consider all of them.
Yeah.
But it's not the ask right now, is it? So let's move on. But I do have, I do have a comment on the in-tide. We really call it in-tide water. Drainage, which we have, and discussing. So you said it's a high priority, but on your risk assessment, it's a two and a one, so it actually not, it should be right at the bottom of your list.
That was my straw man, oh, I told you now.
Well, you guys, and then a risk assessment on this, that's what he's done this game, right?
Yeah, I mean, you know, what what's a risk assessor, a risk is zero until it happens, so it's always hard to assess.
No, wait a minute, that's not the risk. The risk is, happens way before the event.
If it fails, it will be bad, because it entails a rail cross. Which. I don't really want us to be fixing the CN Rail line to the north of Canada. And we would have to, if we did, if we damaged it. They don't fix it, so we could, for general awareness, so when we do these quote-unquote risk assessments, they're very high level, they're. Their best guesses sort of thing, they're not, there's no calculus per se. Sometimes it might be a little bit, but definitely not. And it's measuring, we're sort of spitballing two considerations. The degree of impact. And then the probability of that event happening. So you could have catastrophic impact. But extremely low probability it would happen, so think of an earthquake, it's not gonna jinx anything, we're saying extremely low. But it's relatively low. The things that we would be most concerned about. Are those that would have high impact. Like this. And a high probability of that event happening, that's the perfect storm that we would want to. To ameliorate in advance.
So you raised, my point is, for this, you raised that the impact is a two, and the risk, which assumes the probability, is a one. So it would be at the bottom of your page. Anyway. CN Rail don't come to the party on this. We just provide a big state.
They were here first. If you want your road or your drain or your anything to run anywhere near our rail line, go ahead. However, maybe.
They won't come fix it if it happens, but they'll be sending us a royal logbook.
Oh, and that's what they have done with with three crossing projects, for example, they do it to their standard on our dime.
There's one other risk factor too, and and that's. You know, human impact, and and this is low in terms of that, right, I mean, in terms of danger. To somebody, it's property damage, but not danger, so as we look at some of the other things.
The main property damage is is the beach park, unless it's a really big flood event, in which case we'd damage the the STP. The wastewater treatment plant.
Right.
Because this is the water that runs all the way down tide water, under the cul-de-sac, through the beach park, and down to the outpost of the ocean.
Okay.
So again, you know.
So it's probably, it's all, it's all, it's huge property damage, yeah.
Yeah, if you want, if you want a higher risk drainage problem, that's the one I'm mounting. Because that is already started collapsing. So I know that it's happening.
Yeah.
Its impact.
Can you know?
Depends, yeah, if it's a hundred year long.
All right.
All right.
Two, any other questions on this?
I don't know, I guess we haven't got any consensus of opinion on this one.
I think you need to, throw them all up and and weigh them, yeah, I agree, and that's.
You need to be in the.
I I'm the one who assigned those those risk and impact, I mean, or probability and impact numbers, so, yeah, I didn't rate it at highly in service.
Do we need to down and look at this, or 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 discuss with the infrastructure?
You called through, I mean, you crawled through, didn't you?
I have not personally called through, nor am I getting to it.
Someone was gonna crawl through this weekend, I really didn't let you, you call, call.
Yes, I mean, you called through, I'm answering.
So Blackwell?
No, so some, some things are gonna be tricky, so, you know, you got various options, move this one forward to the next discussion, or not this one, but items.
Yeah.
Move forward to the next discussion, take them off the table, they will go forward, or you can put them in what I would call a parking lot. And in that parking lot, you can then go back to them at the end of the night, and see. Talk about those again after you've gone through them, and.
We can just send those in close text files.
Okay, I'm good at the parking lot.
I'll talk with them, yeah.
Yeah, that's the part. Okay, Mr. Chirkoff, next item.
Uh, the next one is the cloud building renovation. It was ten forty dollars to date. And I understand that. For, I'm throwing another set of drawings that are going past our building inspector. I don't know if there's any other updates on that, I'm just.
If I could waste some time on this, this, with this funding set aside, it's a, and all sorts, there's nothing really to talk about.
Yeah, okay, done, yeah. I'm fine with that, any questions?
Yeah, I just have one question, and you mentioned that, so we spent eighty-one thousand on the beach park. Eighty-one and a half thousand, and I assume that's all the design, you haven't done the management yet, right?
Yeah.
And here we spent forty thousand, which is all the line fees. Both of those are getting, eight, nine percent, getting close to ten percent, you can do math here. So if you go over fifteen. We have to pay for it, you can't take all of them, you can't charge them all a penny, and you need project management as well. So on these projects, we need to be keeping in mind, that when we get to the fifteen percent, some percent threshold, we're paying for it. And most of both of them are heading that way.
Yes, it's nine percent. If the project management is in-house, it's not charged to the project. Except internally as an accounting thing, not not to grant funding.
Right. To my early appointment, yes. So then we take positively paying for it.
Spread out, just like, yeah, they're paying for for any resource that's that correct. I I I think Ross is right, pardon the informality. The projects on track, on budget, will be delivered. Good.
Okay, any other questions on the five? No, no, sure, next item.
It's thirty, now the connected project, any way by your signage. And that is, I'm budgeted at one hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars.
Okay, so this one will. Yeah, I mean, this one, just so that you know, is is a half million dollar project, same size as the fat building. Um, seventy-five percent grant funded. Um, it it was returned uh to to the starting line um a year ago. And uh it's somewhat out of my hands. I don't know, even know what the concerns are that have been contemplated by the citizens committee. Um, there is a suggestion that uh part of the grant would be utilized, usable for project management. Um, when I actually started delving into the details there, that it was less than generous uh offer. Um, but again, this would be a a single project managed by a single outside project manager who I have some familiarity with, um, and I know would need quite a bit of super project management to make sure that they stay on track. So I I would suggest this project, even though it's funded, uh, fun to build, uh, might need to go in a parking lot. Uh, but that doesn't mean that the grant will will be lost because it has to be completed by the thirty-first of December.
But yes, the executed by the.
Final, final spend, thirty-first of December, final claim, thirty-first of March, next year, next year.
All three of these projects in the same, were the same day. It's quite as well as beach park.
No, the beach park, final, final delivery is thirty-first of March, twenty twenty-six.
Counselor, thanks for that there. Uh, I I think we can, you know, parking lot is at the moment in term, but but I think we need to be looking very carefully at what the opportunities are here. Um, in terms of, uh, you know, I I think if we can get some clarity around the jetty, whether the jetty can in fact be uh utilized involved in this, uh, I, you know, I I think it's 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 not just sort of free money to spend or whatever. I think there's there's a lot of of uh good thinking going on towards this, but I think there's, I I think we're we're gonna have some recommendations over the next month or so, and 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 I think we need to, council needs to really take hold, look at those recommendations, but also look at other other ways that they may be able to use these these funds to test it that should really, really uh um.
Are you talking about trying to connect the project funds?
Yeah.
To be applied to the jack?
Yeah.
There there is some discussion that it might qualify for the circle of width. Walking infrastructure to transit.
Um, yeah.
Component.
Okay, right now, it's uh it's with the task force and the the task force is Ronald Dwyer is managing that.
Yeah.
So I think we're probably putting in the parking lots worth a while because he's gonna come back with his group's recommendations. And I think Carl, he's gonna invite you to the next meeting. So that would probably be valuable if you sat in on that and gave some feedback and and uh, you know, cut uh sort of at the timeline down if if people are unrealistic. And to answer your question about the jetty, uh Ross asked me to give Scott Christie a call. I gave him a call. I said, Ross, does a jetty qualify as a pathway? Because TransLink has said pathways in the village. Uh, I've had that directly from them at TransLink meetings. He said, absolutely, it qualifies as pathway. He says, in fact, you could do the whole beachfront as a pathway, pathway from up the hill, down to the water, the jetty on the beachfront. He said he is willing to to put plants up like that. He could probably do a draft and then put it in front of TransLink, see whether they would actually go with it. That being said, Ronald Dwyer is managing the task force and I I can say being sitting at those task force meetings, the jetty is sort of down down the list quite a bit. Their their priority is how can they connect the village? You know, Calvin Grove with Lions Bay and so on.
Really strong relation Calvin Grove connection.
That's kind of their priorities. How do we, you know, bring the people in the village together? So but I I my suggestion is we park it and he brings the recommendations. Yes.
Thank you. You're just a bigger task master. I would uh reiterate the fact that if you want to get through these today, you're gonna just have to focus on, is it on the table, off the table, short, sweet? And have these mark a lot, these deeper dives.
Yeah.
At the next.
Okay, parking lot. Okay, uh, Mr. Chirkoff, next item.
Uh, page thirty-one, Magnesia and Taker Construction, uh, it's a new one, three hundred thirty-three thousand dollars. Um, there is a uh uh implication that this would save a uh significant amount of time from public works. Uh, we can mediate uh intake.
Hey, any questions? I have one question. Uh, do we know how much overtime and that that we actually allocated to this uh in the last year or two or three and?
It's not, it's not overtime. It's almost never overtime because uh overtime is in the dark and we don't go out there in the dark. Uh, it's it's outside the safety protocol. So it's mostly regular time, but that's regular time we couldn't do other things.
Yeah.
It's it's not significant overtime, but it does mean that for the stuff that that didn't get done because we were clearing intake for the third time today. There's intake uh over overtime at the other end on something else, uh, you know, clearing a ditch or whatever it might be, so. I I can't quantify, but I do know that in winter uh and at the change of the season, when the leaves come down and when the rains start and when it starts getting dry, we sometimes gonna have to go out there twice a day to clear the grates so that the water keeps flowing.
Okay, any questions, Counselor?
If this is done, would it, would it give us any more uh water in the summer?
No, it not affect quantity.
It's not a quantity.
It's it's time saving.
I mean, it makes a lot, makes a lot of sense, but if there's something else that we need to do that will give us, give us quantity.
This is not a water saving. It uh it might have something to do with quality down the road, but uh no, this this is uh.
But it makes sense.
A pretty bite-sized piece that we know that when we did this, the 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 redesign at the hobby where we never go to a hobby. We don't need to. It just works.
This doesn't work. It makes sense to fix it, but but do we have the funds to fix it or are are the funds better allocated somewhere else?
Sure, that's council's.
Um, I'd love to do. Yeah, I I know this one well enough, but I think we need to discuss it. Um, for me, it's gonna be, it's gonna be further down the list than a few others. Um, even though during the stage, it's it'd be nice not to have to go out there, but it's three hundred and thirty thousand dollars. Certainly not off the table for me, but it's uh I have the priority list. Which is, I think, is gonna be all of that is making sure we don't run out of water this year.
Yeah, that's it. That's. So I feel very similar. I think it's a worthy project. Um, do we have the ability to execute on it? So our line decision would be whether we're bringing somebody on or we identify a consultant or project manager. Just my thoughts.
So is this off the table then?
Uh, I have been, for me, it's parking lot.
I think, I think it's the next, let's look at it next year. I think that we've got a lot more items to look at.
Counsel is free to bring any of these back at any time, so these are not definitive answers, but.
There's something emerging.
Yeah, let's see, yeah.
So off off the list, is this one here?
Off the list or on the parking lot?
I would say off the list on that.
Good luck. Okay, Mr. Chirkoff, next item.
Uh, it's thirty-three. And now on drainage, uh, Mr. Bird, I shall not briefly as well, that is significantly deteriorated. Um, two hundred eighty-five thousand dollars.
Okay, uh, Mr. Bird, let me just maybe give us some color on that.
So this is a very similar project to the entire water project. This is more pressing, uh, as I said earlier and as I reported before. In this case, the road is in fact collapsing. Um, you know, this is one of those projects where the costs rise exponentially the longer you kick it down the road. Uh, we kind of need to do this.
It's a high priority.
This is almost, uh, don't have a choice.
Um, because left side of the organization collapsed, it was blocked, was the storm somewhere.
It's not blocked. Waters get going somewhere. Of course, we don't know where. You know, we have very permeable terrain, so it's.
No, it could, it could be going completely around the culvert.
Oh, it's certainly the culvert hasn't a bottom. It's definitely been, yeah, the culvert was just holding up the ground untold recently.
Okay, so if it's currently flowing somewhere else under normal flows, um, and across the next, it happens to anything. What do we think the failing mechanism looks like? What do we, what are we trying to avoid? This issue, the maybe, I do this comfortably going where it's not hurting anyone, we just don't know that.
Uh, road class, like for example, happened on Mid Bay.
So we have seen it overflow.
No, the 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 corrugated iron culvert failed finally and collapsed, putting a two-foot hole in the in the road.
You don't go one of them, that come on bacon, yeah.
Yeah, so that happened on on Mid Bay, for example, and that and they say say emergency repair, um, major inconvenience.
So what I'm asking you, maybe we need to figure out how to check someone else. And so the failure, but the baby one's very obvious. You've got a lined kind of ditch, you see the water come down, you see it take a ninety degree, you see it pop out the other side and when it doesn't, you know what it's doing, it's washing down the road. So I'm asking, do we, do we see something like this happening, maybe storms, if it washes down the road? Is there, is there a chance? It's not needed, is what I'm asking. Because you don't have the same flow as the.
It's certainly needed. The question is when? That that I cannot tell you. I suggest this year.
Okay, what's feeling?
I think, I think depending on what else we have, I mean, if we if we can do it, then we do it, but but I think it's a.
Perfect. I'm good with parking until we figure out our project manager.
What we can do.
What we can do, voting panel. Okay, next item, Mr. Chirkoff.
Um, next item is, yeah, you have the exonerating, uh, two hundred and five thousand dollars. Um, the hundred thousand was budgeted last year for this, or reencumberment, funding this year would be hundred and five thousand. It's um, uh, you know, Skada, they grew up familiar with the zone full metering. Uh, figuring out where we're losing water in the village. I know that's a topic of great discussion. All of you can also add.
Yeah, so this is sort of a uh multiple threads going on. We have all ser- all centered around uh water supply. Uh, in some cases, water quality, um, but mostly quantity. So zone metering, um, improving the security of the equipment that we have, uh, council, not to repeat myself, but uh, uh, council will remember that we 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 lost one of our um notes. Uh, this this part here due to lightning strike, the no spare supplies. We we are hanging on by our teeth. Um, we see a lot more of our Skater consultant than than we we used to because there's a lot that needs fixing. Uh, the system is 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 antiquated and and needs to be updated. In addition to the strategic benefits that it will give us in terms of uh further automation, uh labor savings, uh and so on and so forth, which which I I could quantify, but suffice to say that um, that will be a a long-term return. Um, this is not a straw uh straw man project. This is kind of a must-do. What the number will end up being, I don't know, because we, uh, the the RFP is is being written now. And not as we speak, because I was speaking about something else, but it's certainly i- in draft. Um, I certainly need to spend a hundred. That was pre-approved. I mean, I I've approached the saying that that hundred was taxed for and approved for this project. If council elects not to spend it on this project, uh, in terms of some other taxpayer benefit or that's council's prerogative. I I would like council to certainly re-approve the hundred to to continue. I've actually spent quite a bit of it on operating costs already, because as I say, I've seen the consult, the the consultant a lot more than we used to, um, to fix things. Um, but the zone metering is 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 imperative. We have to know where the water is going, the the drip water. And that will be part of this. Uh, not to my, to my surprise, the uh the supplier did not actually pull fiber to the plant today as as um as promised. Um, they had some lame excuse, um, but to actually accommodate what the fiber can do for us in terms of video surveillance, security, so on and so forth, these things all cost money. Uh, and two hundred and five is what I think, um, hundreds committed. I would ask the council sort of allow me to proceed with that pretty soon because I'm actually spending the money out of operating budget at the moment, um, so that we can can move on.
Oh, you're still spending on that?
I'm I'm not spending the hundred because I, you know, I want to leave it up to council to say whether they want to uh redo on that one.
Okay. So so what was the total number in hundred? Have you verified? Two hundred and, uh, it's on the sheet, by the way. I think it's certainly the next line there. Oh, okay, but you're not following it. Carl, I have to go around. So we, is this additional instruments as well as, we thought I got, you said the system we've got and the PC is.
Well, PC is actually pretty good. Uh, no, it's the PLCs, program, program of logic controllers. We have five nodes. Um, if the highway tech project goes ahead with PRBs, that'll be two more nodes, PLCs. Although we might be able to put them on the same bus, not to get too technical. Um, so you know, the system is going to get a little more sophisticated as we bring more and more stuff online. In terms of instrumentation, in addition to the five flow meters, uh, three inline chlorine monitors. So that we can more confidently turn the chlorine down, knowing what the chlorine residual is at the end, rather than relying on hand testing.
Okay.
So we actually get a lot of really nice stuff, nice, not only if you like Skater, just in general.
Yeah, I'm trying to ensure we're not just getting nice stuff. It's just not that someone wants to be able to drive the vanage from from yourself and these on ski slope. Um, as opposed to getting stuff that we need because we got a memory and issues and problems that we're having.
This is part of the the cops are doing business uh to run our underwater system.
Did you touch on Carl, the fact that it's not, it's not uh supported anymore?
We do get license warnings every now and again, uh, as I think I mentioned last time, but you actually talked to the man in Georgia, um, quite hard to understand. Um, he had to hand update our license because we've never seen anybody upgrading from eleven to fourteen before. Um, but yeah, I mean, there is support, mostly because our current provider is is pretty good at what he does. Um, so there's a little bit of customization going on, which you never want. Um, it.
How how much time is spent right now collecting water and and taking it for testing to?
One whole person.
One whole person.
Including quite a bit of overtime because of the cutoffs on the 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 sample age. In some cases, especially bacteriological testing, which is done weekly, has to be within X hours of it being collected, otherwise.
Is there any way that this could, you know, could lower those those costs or or qualify?
In time, yes, in time.
Yeah, because it it just seems incredible that it's a full-time staff when they're collecting water.
How how would, how would, the testing regime is set. We know, we know, there's nothing here that's gonna have hours to start testing. Down the road, the regulator might accept inline flooring rather than hand sampled, for example.
Okay. And that's not anything testing, sorry.
Uh, yeah, on a daily basis, uh, we we test for chlorine. Um, on a weekly basis, we test for all the bacteriological, you know, the E. coli.
Oh, so daily tests are only on chlorine?
Yeah, and pH temperature, but we do that and turbidity, but we do that in-house. Turbidity, we're we're this, this, an hour's worth of beeping from a turbidity meter daily.
It's correct. Take the bus out.
You have to know when it's ready.
Okay, um, yeah, I, this was being, this was being discussed by the previous council for I don't know how many years. Um, but it was always the previous work manager always wanted to do it. Yeah, we would have to pay for it. It wasn't this council, it was the previous council, you know, a few years, this has been carried on, it's been carried forward for quite a few years. Um, my my personal opinion, there were enough people telling us that we needed two different managers. I think it's time to bite the bullet on this one.
Yeah, I would agree.
Yeah, I mean, the one thing that I can promise, not gonna promise much, is you tell me something, uh, is improve water security. Supply, quality. That's it.
Or save.
Okay.
Or rain, or save it.
All right, so we're in budget.
But just what is up?
How like, how likely is it to diminish the the staff final in terms of the?
Uh, that that's a long-term project. That that would be uh not not immediate, you wouldn't see a benefit there immediately.
Okay, let's move forward. We'll keep that in.
Okay, okay, that's in, yeah.
Yeah.
Um, I agree.
Next is the design of water main entry in Ocean View, page thirty-five.
Okay, as as you know, uh, this is just an design project. It's part, it's the final. Okay, as as you know, uh, this is just an design project, it's part, it's the final piece of the puzzle. For one of the oldest stretches of water main in the village. Um, I would like to be ready for potential grant funded, uh, water main and drain. Um, which are already projects.
Shovel.
It's to get get a shovel ready, it's the final piece. In fact, some of the designs sold, that they probably need to be uh.
To be clear, we have three, three other shovels that are in this, already in this.
Yeah, that's fine.
That seems like a lot, is that a hundred and fifty for just design? What's the project that's made of that? Should we have to do it?
Okay, maybe not a couple, but the best part of two million dollars, John.
Okay, but if we have three other shovel ready projects ahead of it, is this critical to us right now? Uh, we'd have to say no.
Mr. Blackwell, so the only, I'm gonna answer that question, but here's what I'm gonna say, it depends. Underdog must be for Carl. With it, where where Carl might be coming from is if these other projects are already funded through the budget process, this one is sitting on standby. As a shovel ready project for other funding that may come down, so.
For ground funding, you're saying that?
That would be the only clarification that I would make.
Yeah, to Michael's point, if we get if we get the grant, we're going, the other project's going to jump on. All right, um, and then if we wanted to add this one, we'd have pretty phenomenal design of this one. The only reason I think to decide to do this one now is if for some reason this one has become a more pressing priority than to a volcano.
This I do not know, because we don't have zone meter. Give me a few more months to get the zone meter.
It suddenly came out that actually you have to do this one first, then I'd say go design now. If it's third in, third in line. Right, I guess we've got one, one and two.
I just asked you, Park, this one right now, Park.
Well, just if I could just, the intention here was if the zone metering, which I was going to be fairly insistent we approved. Uh, showed that this was the problem, then I would need a design sooner rather than later. So that's what this was in the black box.
So just for your background knowledge, you can always amend the budget down the road. If Carl, this comes across as information, determines that this is now priority, council can revisit this. In 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 June, July, August and onwards.
Except if we spend all our reserves on other things.
Then it's basic.
Okay, so Park is on the table, everyone good with parking it?
Open it.
Is it, is it parking lot or deferred?
Deferred.
Given.
First, okay.
I think it's, you know.
Joe, next item.
Uh, like the beach park, uh, Jenny, uh, which is tied to the previous especially we had. Um, the potentially being incorporated to the uh, like the park compliance project, hundred and nine thousand dollars. It's been removed from the operating budget to capitalize on that situation, is that we're tearing out a jetty and then building one. Um, so I'm assuming that, well, I won't assume anything, that that's just reasonable.
Okay, um. Yeah, well, I mean, I think we all know enough about the jetty, what I do need now, and again, sooner rather than later, perhaps not, uh, waiting for April fourteenth, uh, budget approval process. Is to spend thirty five thousand on the design. So that I would almost like, uh, uh, go when I go, uh, this time next week. So you you've seen the proposal, uh, was presented last week, um. It's it's complete, it's thorough, it's, it'll give us what we need to know. And then I'll raise thirty five thousand dollars. Now, whether it's grant fundable down the road. Thirty five thousand dollars represents more than fifteen percent of of the final project cost, so uh, we would be self funding regardless.
Is that the biologist and engineer?
Yeah, yeah.
So about fifteen percent we pay for that, or if we go above, we pay the whole, should that?
No, no, only above, uh, only only the part above, now, uh. Typically, you're not allowed to pre-spend the grant funding money, but but this grant exists, so we wouldn't be pre-spending it, it would be eligible. If if it turns out that the jetty is is within the the ambit, yeah, which hopefully it is.
Yeah, I I hope you'll bring home, bring forward a recommendation to next council meeting for that, so.
Okay, any questions?
Yeah, yeah, I have a few questions, this is very, in my opinion, this is already in the grant, it's in the beach park grant. For nine thousand dollars, using using the grant money, you can get your thirty five thousand dollar design right now. That's we should study until we know where the beach park is going. It's already in the grant.
Hey, any other questions, comments?
Anyone comment to my suggestion, but it stays in the grant.
That's uh, that's out of my hands, uh, you know, in terms of the scope of the project, uh, it's not in the project now.
It is in the project, well, that's a that's a council discussion the next meeting.
Exactly.
It's two different opinions in two different meetings.
Um, do we want to uh, park this pending bids and task force discussion?
I think, I think, I I think it's.
Blackwell.
My recommendation is maybe just want to move into the next meeting and have a more wholesome discussion at that time, with regard to how best to manage.
How's our, I think, how else, problem?
I think how it's funded, it's, we're gonna have to work that out, where it's funded, how it's funded and so on, but I think it needs to be funded and and I and I don't think that we're tying our hands. By saying this needs to be done and uh. Well, we're we're gonna work it out in the next couple weeks, basically.
My feeling is that it's going to have to be funded, because the if the beach is at jeopardy, it's just not how it's going to be funded, where.
Yeah, how creative we can be in in making it happen, but it's got to happen.
It has to happen before many things, so, yeah.
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 Okay, so we're gonna push that, defer that to the next meeting or park it?
Well, I'll bring a recommendation, asking for immediate authorization to spend the money.
Right.
So it's your top next item?
Same again.
Uh, the next item, now on this page forty one, uh, P waters.
Thanks to me, sorry about that, I took I took down two people.
Yeah, with the pH, I just went to, I mean, water, that's a recommendation from the infrastructure committee, a hundred thousand dollars. Yeah, page forty one of your package.
Okay, Mr. Ver, um, you, I know you've talked about this before, wanna add to it, to save pipes?
Nothing, nothing to add on justification.
Could I suggest that if we do, this is one Tony should speak to as an expert, right?
Yeah, he would be very persuasive on the need to do it sooner rather than.
Why don't we give Tony five minutes at the next council meeting? And and he's, he's arguing for it, can we do that?
Yep. Okay, it's in the heart, not ready to go.
Can I make the suggestion? Uh, for the councillor, have his, have his comments, I would suggest do so only if there's no other option, if it's not inclined to go forward. For sure, but if maybe going forward, I mean, if if council's decide, decision is to keep moving it forward.
This is not one that I would go to the map for, it it can wait, uh, how much longer, again, I don't know.
I think we need to figure out what else, Joe, we must, must do.
I was just thinking that next one, I have to.
Thank you, Ross. Sorry, uh, councillor Brogman. Off the table. Off the table? So next meeting or off the table?
Um. Well, I I I need to understand what else we have to, we have to fund. And and if if this this isn't.
Okay, let's park it.
I I think it needs to be done, I'm not questioning that, but.
Okay, let's park it, we'll go down the list and Tony may come for the next meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah, next item.
The cloud building, neodymium system, uh, I would recommend that we park this till I get some further clarification. Um, our, uh, Mr. Barrett has, uh, uh, said previously in our conversation that this was, this should fit into the existing budget for. For cloud, it was always intended to be, um, and and we've come in under budget for the four ninety nine rebuild. So until I get some absolute clarification on that.
Well, Joe, perhaps I can, I I interject there, it's never been in the cloud renovation budget, uh, previous council approved this, this number, had that number, with the same thing. This would be just a carry forward, um. It's irrelevant.
Yeah, I would agree, he didn't say it was carry forward, it wasn't for you last year, because I was, when I looked through the grant funding, there were costs to stick them in line up for neodymium.
So if I want, uh, waste any time discussing if it's a carry forward, and like council doesn't want to carry forward. We want to change the carry forward, I would just, we don't have funds for it right now, so we'll take it off table for now. I'm just carrying forward, I was, they say it's already, it's already funded.
It's been taxed for, it's been taxed for, it's sitting in an eighty thousand dollar neodymium system has been taxed for.
Okay, sorry, I misunderstood that, no.
So unless you want to earmark that eighty thousand for something else.
Something else.
Um, I I I suggest it, it's it's got to be done, we should try department, they need one, it's payable.
Does it have to be, when does it have to be done?
No. Uh.
Yesterday, I know, yeah.
No, and it doesn't, it it's not part of the grant funded project, so there is actually no timeline on it.
Okay, leave it in, carry it forward, Mr. Blackwell.
Uh, just to go to the the last question, the reality is they've not had a neodymium system this this long. So so it's awkward, it's problematic, and I'll be able to exhaust the bay. Or or remove the exhaust from the bay efficiently, so yes, it would, it would be fantastic addition. But the reality is they've been having to resolve that exhaust issue to 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 date, so not.
There's a worksite ticket on it, so.
It's just not that it's not important, it's just it's not necessarily critical.
It's not a worksite, it's.
It is.
It is.
Yeah, we've been.
We've been, isn't it?
That's probably.
That's a safety issue.
That changes what you just said.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. I think if it's a safety issue, because if somebody.
Okay.
Was harmed.
Yeah, and or in seven years they come back to us and.
Yeah. Yeah, okay.
Okay, I'm good.
Previous council made the high opposition.
Ready?
I think, yeah.
Jenny, create.
Uh, council chair, next item.
Uh, fire tunnel rebuild, seventy thousand dollars fully grant funded, that means move on from that.
Underway.
Underway.
So on today. It looks like it's half finished.
Page.
Fire ground vehicle. Page twenty one, uh, request from the fire chief for a uh, a a truck, uh, more than a couple people mover, uh, a fire ground vehicle.
So if the fire truck that we're retaining for the next five years has the capacity to move people, then we don't need a second vehicle for fifty thousand dollars. In my thoughts.
It's a transit system here.
Yeah.
If we replace it, we go to a smaller town, that was a.
Yeah, that was one of the, one of the arguments, yeah. Um, we have, we have another discussion, it's not, it's not in here at this point in time, but we were talking about the possibility, our CEO was recommending a. Possible purchase of a vehicle for the by law enforcement. And I'm just wondering, um, we need, if we're looking at, if if we had a vehicle that was by law enforcement. That could also double as this. Um, we have the, you know, we have a high profile vehicle, which is what I would like for by law enforcement. Uh, it's just have something that really, you know, if if we're considering a, uh, another vehicle, I think we need to. Get some efficiencies in in doing this. I'm not, I'm not convinced this is a on fire, need for command vehicle, but I'm just saying, as we're looking, as we're looking at things, we should be looking at. Some creativity and some other possibilities.
Do we paint it, Brad?
It would be high profile.
Thank you, just to, just to remind you that as to the fire chief's rationale, he referred to the example of having to be in position of using his personal vehicle to collect. Folks from the from lineski hospital, or or otherwise you decommissioning a fire truck, it so far is, it's it's out of the community. Uh, this command vehicle would allow for those sorts of peripheral actions to be done without. Either using personal vehicles or taking a fire truck out of service, so that was the rationale.
So how often are we using our personal vehicle to transport a private residence? And there is a thing called the, those hospital transfer vehicles that give people ride times from the hospital and they get everybody fifty bucks.
I'm not advocating one here, I'm just, yeah, it's not, yeah.
I can, I can appreciate the heads of the money to be using a private vehicle to give people routes, but there are other options.
Other options. Uh, I mean, I, when that came up, I just thought, if somebody's driving in from here to pick up somebody to bring them home, it seems to me that there's like other alternates. Uh, alternate ways over, yeah. Taxi.
Mr. Blackwell. I heard a way of participating in conversation, but the reality is, to your point, you know, scenario like that, um, there's no reason why. Your by law enforcement is effectively a function of protective services, so there's no reason why a by law enforcement officer couldn't go off out of the community and collect. Firefighters, and that was required three, five times a year, whatever the number is, it's not three hundred days a year. Uh, the the this relatively small number of days that might need to happen, that could be something in theory that could be done.
Okay. Did we have a vehicle in here?
It's not in here.
No, not in.
That's another consideration, so.
So if I could, that by law enforcement vehicle component was, that was set out in that staff report, and that, just just for background, a quick reminder. That was to to reflect the fact that approximately ten thousand dollars every year spent on kilometer charges. Which means that in five years you can buy a pretty darn good second headed vehicle, and then you own it outright. So that is all within the context of, of reallocating the existing funding, it's not about. Currently adding on to buy a new vehicle, it's about working within the existing budget and just reallocating, having utilized it, so just.
So would you bring that back, that report back, but maybe make some adjustments to it, that this could double as a a vehicle? Uh, for fire pickup, should we need it?
Yeah, I'm I'm actually waiting for some more direction from council with regards to specifically what it's looking for to to revisit this matter. Uh, without getting into detail, just a reminder, it's a, it's a closed council discussion, so I won't say too much about it, other than to say. Uh, for me to build a craft exactly what I'm, what council's looking for would be helpful, that just a wee bit more information. Uh, beyond what I've already provided.
Uh, park this.
Or I would, I'd strike it, I don't think it's necessary.
Strike it as a budget transition, we're not going to buy fifty thousand dollar.
Fire truck issue.
Yes, man.
Yeah.
There's another solution.
Yeah, we're looking at other solutions, you possibly.
All right. That's for sure, uh, page thirty nine or thirty seven, uh, the floating dock in barrier, the white K B's part.
Joe, with voices too, by the way.
I do, we got some.
Do you think he was thirty five?
Thirty seven?
Yeah, forty seven.
Yes.
You can do this, completely looking at this version.
What is it?
You can, you.
No, it's.
Jane the petrol, one was in here.
I don't care, it's, I'm not staying on the same one, I've got thirty seven with the dock, yeah.
Thirty seven is the dock, yeah.
Yeah. So this is a dock in place of the uh, the logs, that we have the.
The log of current float, yeah, um, this is one that also is partly justifiable, that pays for itself in operating cost savings over time. Uh, there's also a safety aspect to this, um, the current log boom. And dock are are overdue for replacement in terms of rottingness, uh, the hardware is is just about finished.
I think.
Um, you will recall that we experimented with with leaving the boom out last winter, uh, that that was a failed experiment, it broke apart more or less, luckily it didn't float off entirely. So, yeah, I did, this is, uh, you know, if we want to, uh, give the uh, impression at least of prosperous welcoming. Unity, uh, that does things for its residents, this would be a really nice opportunity.
What's the delivery time, on that?
Six weeks, they tell me.
So it'd be for this this year?
Yeah.
So July the first, we'd have a.
There we are, we got some for July, Kurt.
All right.
Would there be a barrier of substance?
A barrier in terms of?
Like, because the floating.
Oh, yeah.
Logs do prevent like a lot of, you know.
Yes, um, that would be within public works maintenance budget, we, how it's actually to be done. In fact, the uh, Mr. Christie, the engineer, uh, the 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 RP bio guy on the jetty. Has has uh, designed that worked at at his island place, uh, and has been not taken up for nine years. It's a large amateur polypropylene pipe, black, that gets nice and warm in the sun, the kids love flying on it, um, it. It's cool.
Okay, and. How much was the replacement of the last?
But it's not expensive.
The, because the dock was replaced not too many years ago.
About seven, I think, yeah.
So the lifespan is about seven years, and how, I thought, I was under the impression it was like ten or twelve thousand dollars.
It was about that, yeah, as far as I remember, and so that's due, this one is obviously slightly more expensive, that they tell me.
It's life, yeah.
That that all last twenty years.
And the dock that we have right now has styrofoam probably in it for the cover?
Uh, no, it's actually air floats, but um, it it's just about done, I, you know, last year. Uh, no, it's actually air floats, but, um, it, it's just about done. Uh, you know, last year, we, we got reports of nails sticking out. It's actually quite hard to, to fix a floating dock, so we actually had to borrow a boat to come banks and nail it on.
Well, it's getting near the end of life.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Sounds like I love.
No.
I would say that this would be a vast improvement to the beach in our thing's entirety and. If we're not looking at, I mean, it's significantly larger than the existing dock.
Yep.
And if it's going to cost twelve thousand dollars to replace what we have, we're going to get, looks like maybe three times the square footage for. And the lifespan, it makes sense, and it would definitely get well used.
I, I think all of those things. Now, for Adam.
So, this is forty thousand dollars.
True, incorrect.
Whether we put the H D P pipe booming, because we do that anyway, so whether it's this or the wind, that works.
How come I'm looking at fifty, twenty fifty on the chief?
Fifty, I can.
This is.
Yeah, in fact, I was wondering.
I was, you might have.
Thirty six and fourteen.
That includes bridles, grounding blocks, uh.
And that doesn't include those black pipes you're talking about, doing, that in place of logs, and how much you think those are? You said not much, but is that like a few thousand bucks is what you're thinking?
Ten, I, I was, I was planning to do that, it makes, makes sense, because.
They've ever fixed the logs anyway.
Yeah, exactly. I mean, you know, we have a budget, uh, we have a nine thousand dollar budget to put the logs in and take them out every year.
But if you got this, you'd be replacing, you're thinking of those black pipes to replace the logs, you know, I've heard of the logs, I can't say.
And you don't take the logs, you don't take the black pipes in and out.
No, no.
So.
They stay there.
So, nine grand a year becomes free.
Well, pays for that.
Pays for that, and then going forward, we're not spending nine thousand dollars every year to take them out. The back.
Correct.
Yeah.
Well, just, just there, um.
Council writer. It. Yeah, sorry, the, the, to the comment of, uh, appearing like a prosperous community, um, yeah, that's one thing, but, uh. Uh, I have less of an interest in that, uh, they, it makes sense rationally and not eating over some long amortization period. In terms of it paying for itself, um, I'd be more comfortable throwing money at more pressing things like, uh, leaks and drainage and ropes and bridges.
Okay, um, anybody else, councillor, uh, problem?
Yeah, I, I had, twice last summer, I had, uh, residents identify real safety concern around the logs and the, the dock. And, um, interestingly, one of the person, the people who identified the, the greatest concern. Was one of the, was, is a for, is a former Lionsgate resident, born and raised here, probably the most high risk individual I've ever known in my lifetime. But now with this kid's on the, on the dock, it's very. That we're going to get.
Smashed.
Smashed, you know?
That was one of the things that I took into consideration.
Yeah, it's not an effort to work.
I, I, I think that's really helpful, like, so logs moving together with the, uh, warp, the dock.
And then it gets caught there.
And it's, is, is.
There are no light cars.
With those waves coming in and out.
Someone could die.
Yeah.
So, on the table.
And you have to fall between a boat and.
Bravo, I'm on the table.
Yeah, it's done, yeah, yeah, I am, I'm.
Yeah. I was just, I was happy with, with, with walkers, who's getting, we have to stack up against something else we need.
If I could, don't forget, there's lots more opportunities.
So, it can come and go still.
You're gonna be absolutely happy to refine this beyond today.
So, for now, leave it on the table and let's go to the next item.
If I could just foreshadow too, you have a couple of fire items, just to sort of speed things up that you're not at yet, but just foreshadowing. Uh, S, S C V A's and turnout gear, I wouldn't spend any time on that, you sort of have to have those. So, unless council's really.
Are those in the budget and you went in the operating budget, do you?
Uh, I don't have to ask you all, but, uh.
No, this is on that.
Was it just the sources?
I just have a question about that, that's really serious, it's more about, is that a cycle, because it's released in nineteen forty six?
I thought it's forty seven, yeah.
Like.
It's the old Marina Echo, that was an old.
My class, yeah.
How does a vehicle last that long? My God, is it in garage parts and covered up?
There's something I could.
Wow, sorry.
Black, just as a reminder, um, they, they asked the chief with respect to this one, was, uh, so they utilized this vehicle. In air quotes, uh, to deal with moving cars that they practice extraction loan around. Uh, the fire chief is the only one that, uh, permits himself to use it because he doesn't have brakes and there are other various.
Okay, that's a work site.
Challenges with operating that machine. Uh, which is why he brought that forward as a, as a subtle little question.
So, start to go to that discussion, which was last week, um, we did have a discussion within public works and we would be happy to let them utilize our. Echo. If we drive it.
Okay, so once a week, you have to go up there on a Wednesday?
They don't do auto X practice every week, so.
No, we tell them, yeah.
It's a couple of, three, four times a year maybe, so it's.
Okay.
It's, uh, the, the Echo can drive on the highway, uh, we do have to escort it with a flashing light vehicle, but.
Did you talk to chief, fire chief?
I haven't spoken to him.
So, why don't we. Park that and let you talk to the fire chief. The other two items are sort of muscle, auto extracts and so on, the, um.
Well, I mean.
Jaws of light.
We were talking about turn your gear, right?
If I could.
Yeah. Cause you.
You, you may want to consolidate the discussion if there is what needed around the S P, S C B A and the turnout gear to move those together in one discussion. Is everyone knowing what S C B A is?
No.
No.
That's the.
So, I've got time bringing up for it.
Oh, okay.
That's the oxygen.
Just, listen, you love all that safety, right?
That's cause not, and the turnout gear is the, the helmets, the boots, the gloves, the, the pants and the jacket.
Okay, um, I'm all right.
Yeah.
Yeah, the S C B A and the turn again, it's best used and needs to be replaced, needs to be replaced.
Okay, so leave it in, uh, that's for sure, uh, next item.
Well, a side by side.
Well, I mean, we, we haven't discussed the, the cutters and the spreader.
I think we joined up, didn't we, our?
No, no, it is, yes, the turn again, which is the regular stuff we need. Um, the.
Cutters are on page nineteen.
The cutters is the desire to go from.
Hydraulic.
To the electric.
Yeah.
Um. Argument, uh, the argument on that, just to, to reiterate, was the cutters that they have are almost at the limit with the new technology in cars. And so, that was what the chief identified, and correct me if I'm wrong, chief says they're right at the sort of limits of what can actually, uh, extract somebody. So, he's hoping to get these battery replacements, which are much more.
So, just to clarify, it's way to that, um, so these are hydraulic, uh, the existing ones are hydraulic, which he would, in this case, if it was approved. Um, maintain as a, a sort of backup, um, the challenges that the pressures associated with hydraulics. Uh, that's where I'm looking for it.
I, I think.
Yeah, they, they, uh, they diminish, they decrease over time, they, they reduce over time, so what it sold as, which I can't remember the numbers, twenty two hundred pounds. Over time becomes less and less as, as the seals and so forth get older of these bits of equipment. That's one consideration, the other consideration that the chief spoke to was the fact that. Um, with these hardened steels that are utilized to create, um, these, these car compartment cages, cages around.
The whole agency we sent with.
Yeah, they're using, I think you referred to boron, impregnated or boron coated steel and so forth. Which makes the steel harder, which is more of a problem, a problem with regard to hydraulic systems they have anyway. Even if those pressures were decreasing over time. And the last piece is, uh, that I recall they were referring to is that, of course, the battery operated ones are lighter. They're easier to operate and manipulate versus the hydraulic system, which requires a gasoline powered pump and the hoses to the, to the, um, the cutters.
Okay, uh, leave it in or start.
I've got a thing to park it up, I was at a conference last week, week before last, and, and Lotto B C. I, I forwarded information, uh, to the chief of Lotto B C and various, uh, fire departments in, in B C have successfully applied for. Grants to, for various purchases, I, I, I'm not sure what else can happen there, but I believe that a lot of our either are jaws for labor, spread, spread or. Um, the one that we have now was perhaps funded by a grant previously, I can't, I can't remember, but anyway, certainly, uh, I.
Was squamish, sorry.
Okay, so it's hard.
It was.
I mean, uh, and.
So, possibly.
You know, pursue some of those things, that'd be great. Just for clarification, when I'm saying park it on, I'm talking about revisiting those at the end of this now. If you want to defer it, then just move it, but if you want to revisit this later down the road, then just move it forward.
Yeah. Uh, struggle. Defer. I want to defer.
I think we should defer.
I, I think it's a defer.
Defer.
The share, yeah.
Okay.
So, it's all.
It is, so, okay, thank you. Okay, next item, sure, Ross.
Uh, can we put a side by side U T V from the public works to access the intakes, it's thirty eight.
Um, I can short circuit this discussion, I, I'll, I'll, I'll take it out of consideration.
Okay. All right, it's off, uh, sure, Rob, next time.
Um, there's twenty thousand dollars went from fire for additional renovation, customization after the, uh, private building renovation is finished. Installation of cabinets, what have you, don't store, but the gear and customize for the fire firm.
I would say until we actually have a building, we should defer this. Is, is there any likelihood?
I'm like the news, that sounds like a, could be part of the grant.
Sorry, just run that by me again, Joe.
So, I was just thinking about my list, cause I was like stalls for the, for the firing.
Yeah, uh, there, there is.
But when is the building going to actually construction? Is it going to wrap up in the end of the year?
Twenty four? It's supposed to be done by the end of the year.
This is going to, and food and everything, or they can spend it final.
Yeah, so, right now, the turnouts are, are on hooks between the two engines, um, with not enough room to put on your boots properly. The idea is to move that changing facility to, uh, a room that will be vacated by the current compressor. Um, that's used for this, for the S C B A, but, and that will need lockers and, um. Essentially, roll away metal cabinets. To hang your stuff.
Is none of that for you, Grant?
It was not considered in the scope of the project funded by the grant, no.
Wonder if, yeah, if we can park this. Um, or I, I would, I would take it up this year.
I, I would suggest that, uh, if we do the pattern, uh, which we are, there'll be nowhere to hang your gear.
So, leave it in, but whether it gets spent or not this year will be the question.
I, I don't really see an alternative, of course.
Here, just to remind you, if we could.
Yeah.
You don't have to decide today, you just have to figure out when you want to move it over to the next phase of, of discussion.
Leave it out, okay, leave it out.
All right.
Okay. Joe, next item.
Um, there is a ten thousand dollars, that was a budget for what I spent for some turnout gear, so that's currently sitting reserves, and it's just, uh, going to be. Spent, uh, this year.
Careful.
That's straightforward.
It's the same team, you know, two, maybe we spoke about a few minutes.
Yeah, I think, yeah, we put that together with the, with the.
Okay, next item, Joe.
Uh, Village Hall of Sound.
Oh, sorry, there's rescue sixty three.
Yeah, sixty three was the, was the faster turnout gears than you. So, you got two ten thousand dollar items there.
Got you.
Yeah, the first, the first one was budget for last year, it just was.
Yeah.
Right, uh, Village Hall of Sound system upgrade, um, so there's not a separate sheet for this, uh, however, uh. There have been, uh, a number of comments regarding the quality of the sound system in, um, uh, in the hall. Um, I, I know that, uh, there've been a number of people, um, uh. Uh, staff and council have gone in there and, uh, kind of tested, uh, the sound system, it's not great. Um, uh, there's actually a renter of the, um, uh, Village Hall has, uh. Rented their own sound equipment, uh, because, uh, the existing equipment is not adequate. Uh, so, uh, we priced it out, uh, and it's a profit of seventy five hundred dollars to replace the existing equipment.
So, I know that when there's been community, like the Halloween children's party and adult one, and when they, they go and rent proper sound equipment. To achieve what they're trying to achieve, we will never achieve what they're trying to achieve with seventy five hundred bucks to purchase that gear.
And if you, and the difference was to the, um, the consequences, there's no way that they're going to use this.
No, I think.
Mr. Bylaw. My recommendation to council is put this down the road, it would be nice for sure, but you have a lot of high priority items. And not that this is going to fund those, but it will contribute to it.
And contribute towards, uh, what's your problem?
Uh, I chaired the accessibility committee for the village a number of years ago, and one of the things that, um, was, was. Not really considered by a lot of people was, was, we, that was before we hit the ramps into the hall and that sort of thing. When people think of accessibility, they often think of, of physically getting people there. But what happens with our community, with our, our community center, with, from now at this point, is we invite people to meetings. And a lot of the people come to those meetings and cannot hear in the meeting, so they, they, they don't have access to what's going on. And as our population ages, it's something we really, you really need to be aware of. I, I'm, I'm not saying it's, it's on fire urgent, but I'm just saying that it's not, it's not a nice habit, it really is a required item. If they're going to invite people into Roden Hall for an event, they have the right to hear what's going on.
So, you brought up something important there, I think there is an accessibility grant, isn't there, somewhere, that I've seen something on that, may, maybe that's what we're looking for.
For us, that, that could, that could help us, yeah. But, you know, we're looking for greater community involvement. And, you know, and I, I've sat in meetings and watched people training and, you know, it's. And at, at all candidates meetings, I, I saw, saw that, that, that's the last time I think of it.
Uh, park it or defer?
I say we defer for now, and if we do invite the community out for an event for a town hall or something, we could go and rent, I think, in the meantime and pursue grant offers.
Yeah, well, it's about for grants on the accessibility, I think I've seen something on that.
Yeah, okay.
You always think ramps, though, for the accessibility.
Yeah.
When you think of accessibility, but, but, you know, it's so much more than that.
No, that definitely is.
Okay, uh, next item, Joe.
So, the last two items are, uh, village office furniture equipment and renovations, put these two together. Uh, replacement of chairs, tables and, um, uh, some drywalling, we're trying to be, uh, the old council chamber there to, um, create a secure area for, uh. Doctor, doctor's storage and, uh. Cubicles and what have you, for actually make more efficient use of the space. Um, uh, and so that's kind of the, the ask here from administration.
Good point, point on it, give it more detail, some of the chairs are seriously falling apart, but it's, as are some of those desk components. So, this is not about switching everything off, it's about switching out those things that are worse, um, that, that the notion of secured space. Uh, is, uh, a function of the fact that we have lots of stuff, files and other things that need to be locked up. And there's only so many sort of filing cabinets and so forth, you can keep that in, really should be fireproof room. You know, that's a lot more money. What I'd say, one at least would be, be nice to have all of this stuff in a room, which would be sort of, the notion is, in theory, the back. Wall of that former council chair.
Okay, uh, any comments?
I've got, I've got a question, I'm surprised to see this on the budget, so how much did this sound system and new lights and all of this cost us?
Donated.
Stone angels?
By the citizens of, uh.
Yeah, pull the other one, mate, positive.
Uh, Carla may have a finer.
Um, so you mean the new A B system?
Yeah.
These TVs were all here, previously funded under a COVID grant, I believe.
Okay, well, the point I was, yes, the point I was trying to make is.
Fifteen hundred dollars.
When I was trying to make, I see this scale of stuff just happen typically, and then I wasn't expecting sixteen hundred dollars, I thought it was going to be more. Then I read some lying around, um, isn't this just part of the office maintenance budget? I mean, do we come to council, we tell them we need to.
We can, by law.
Thank you, um, I mean, maybe Joe will put a finer point on it, but I think the, the reason is that the numbers we're talking about here are beyond what we have. A staff, we don't have that much money in sort of our normal, whatever, what is it called?
Baguette.
Yeah, we've got a very, that's like a thousand dollars, uh, it's, it's, it's just, it's a, it's a, it's a amount every year and it's always pretty much to budget, it's just the normal already costs, but then we, then we, it's just over and above what we've normally.
All right, my feeling is, uh, you know, that's going to help morale, uh, the office was rundown, it's probably over time, you know, it's been long past due, so.
Does charity, the former council chamber, please replace.
Generate a lot more, uh, morale, right, and council run.
Um, I held a couple of meetings in, in that, in that room, and they're former council chamber, chamber. I'd like to see it be, be accessible as a more active room and, and, you know, during the day, we could. I'd like to see it be, be accessible as a more active room and, and, you know, during the day it would potentially, you know, could be meetings in there.
Yeah.
But right now the, the chairs are respectable.
It's abandoned.
And it just really needs to be up there. I'd also recommend that the CEO, that the set aside some funding for around the table for, for his office.
Yeah.
So you could.
I, I will mention, you may wanna look at, at an auction and this isn't terrible furniture, but I know.
Yeah.
I, I've been involved in trying to get rid of furniture, which was top of the line. Most crews won't even take it. So there is furniture out there, which is great furniture, but, and for varying prices. Just the bottom.
Crisis?
Well, there's, there's.
An auction.
Yeah.
No, on the table, off the table.
On the table, it's on the table.
I think it's on.
I wouldn't mind the photo back.
It's just we're talking to each other, sorry.
Okay, uh, Mr. Sherrock, next item. Um, so who's getting up the, uh, our.
Uh, Joe, just one thing. I don't know how's, I missed it. You, how's it been missed? Is these stairs need replacement? I had it probably for forty thousand dollars. Um, I don't know where that.
I did not.
I may only be in my head.
I don't recall I gave you two thousand dollars for the stairs. But yeah, that, that would not be the items that aren't included on this list. So let's just talk.
So I, I know that is just sort of, you know, on the fly, I realized, but, uh.
I saw, didn't I see twenty four in here somewhere?
And there's a four in there. Did you?
Twenty four?
Yeah.
Oh, you know, sorry, Joe. My bad. It's in the maintenance budget.
You're right.
Okay.
My feeling is we need to execute on those stairs before we do almost anything else showing.
Well, if you wanna bring.
I was thinking about this evening, those stairs.
Like those stairs need to be.
They were, they were lit. They were safe, you know.
A lot of that.
But you go up to be in and walk around the end and I'm getting nightlight and I'm trying to remember where that bloody concrete block is. Right? And I have this vision of hitting the concrete block, so.
But that's.
And it's right over there, so.
All right.
I, it's gotta be done. I, I would see a pre, pre approval on that.
Okay.
Because it's gotta be done.
I have vendor lined up. I know what they need to look like.
So maybe break that out.
Just so we're sure. So this is already in motion behind the scenes.
It's, it's.
I don't, I wouldn't spend it connected to A on this.
All right, any other items or any other areas we should cover up? Mr. Blackwell.
We should have us as a stack.
So items that are, uh, that haven't been considered in capital class, so there is a operating budget item, uh, request from fire on page twenty. Uh, fifty thousand dollars a year for number housing.
So, Mr. Blackwell, as a reminder, uh, the fire chief was expressing, he has challenges around improvement and retention of firefighters. He spoke to the fact that we're basically a training ground for recent fire school graduates. But of course, we are losing a lot to, uh, the full time departments that are hiring out of Lions Bay. Certainly a compliment to the quality of volunteer firefighters. Um, he also noted on the fact that it is proving to be a challenge in attracting volunteers to Lions Bay because Lions Bay doesn't offer the same range of amenities that other communities offer. Restaurants, pubs, and whatever else they offer, roller skating rinks and.
Thanks, hard chief.
This is what he said. Only convey what he said. Um, and he feels that, you know, once if you can get them here with an inducement, that once they're here, they will, they will understand camaraderie, camaraderie of the group, the quality of the lifestyle in Lions Bay, and it will be a done deal. But to have, to have something, this as an inducement will really go a long way in his mind to attracting those recruits or volunteers to begin with, that was his rationale.
Okay, comments, questions?
So I guess I completely understand the rationale. Um, I'm just not sure you wanna give a blank check to somebody if, like, there's more discussion. If we're, if the intention is to subsidize housing, then maybe work with residents who are willing to rent their suites too. And somehow make sure that the money's going to accommodation or I, I don't know, just.
Mr. Blackwell? Okay, thank you, Blackwell. Uh, just to, to clarify, it's not necessarily for the purpose of going housing. It's just, it's a cash payment um, to get them here to.
Yeah.
So he has a bit of a formula or calculus and I don't have it in front of me. It's in the binder, I think.
I think it says five hundred to five hundred, uh, for the first six months. And so it's a, so they're giving a check and they're sort of saying that it's going to go towards. Housing or whatever. So it's three to five hundred.
In state of six.
It's up to three grand, yeah.
So it's not, it's not entirely blank check. There are parameters. There are areas indicating, but, uh, beyond that, I guess it is a bit of that.
I guess I just saw in Hawaii, they were giving five thousand dollar bonuses to be the manager of Jack in the Box. And thousand, every employer was offering a, a minimum thousand dollars.
See ya.
Nine dollars.
Yeah.
Jack in the Box.
Jack in the. Jack in the Box in Hawaii.
Okay.
So it sounds pretty reasonable. That's what I wish. Okay, that's.
Okay, leave on or strike or have questions?
I'm not, I have questions. I'm not completely convinced this one's completely thought through and also not sure about the net. So that means around them is seventeen people. We have to take up this.
Yeah.
To spend fifty grand. We only have twenty four people in the aisle.
It's called a turnover. And the other thing is.
Seventeen in a year.
I, I think that's what they've been experiencing, yeah, in and out. Um, the other thing that.
They don't even all concerned that we spending fifty grand for people that are only staying here for a couple of months.
Well, I think the Ross also should have mentioned is the, the chief's point that, that our volunteers only get paid every six months. Right? And so I don't know if they have a particular cash flow issue paying their rent, but this certainly helps. It's, it's an incentive, um, to come here. And if they leave.
They would have to be here for six months before they would be entitled to this.
Yeah. No, no, they would get it from month one.
They get it from month one, yes.
But they would have to, they wouldn't get the six months if I went here.
Yeah, the, the thing about the making every six months, I, I'm just wondering if there's some way that, that we could manage that. You know, advance that if we know that they're going to, going to recruit, that, that somehow we could advance. I'm looking at Joe, but, um, so because, I mean, money in hand now is uh, more of an incentive than money six months from now, I think. So, um, and to your point, perhaps it's can, can be a cash flow issue as well, perhaps. But I just think it, are there some other ways that we can, other incentives that, that could come to play? It just, it seems like a kind of a rough one that.
Mr. Blackwell, have you had a discussion or have you, I'm sure I've had discussion with the cash flow or payments?
No, with respect, I would say this is not in front of you to discuss right now. This is about whether or not you want to move this forward, this request, whether you want to kill it or whether you wanna table it and talk about it later.
Okay. Uh. I would, yeah, I would like to table and talk, talk about it later, but I think there's a bigger question to be asked about the line of. And so we've got three hundred and eighty thousand dollars operating budget. We were about to add two hundred and odd thousand dollars in supplementals here. Now that's like fifty percent of, another fifty percent on their budget. That doesn't include a hundred and twenty thousand dollars a year for a fire truck. Um, and now this fifty thousand dollar ask as well. We afford fire hall? I mean, I'm, I'm up at that level already. Like, where's the, I think we need to do a detailed session and sit and think about the file and think how the community is doing, like. I'll keep going back to Sesmit and then they, they got some view of Metro with secondhand fire trucks and believe they're paying for the fire. I think Metro and the fire hall, but it's a little different, but I think we, I think we need to step back on this one. Okay?
Yeah.
I agree. Can I just jump in here? I agree. I think we need to do, uh, an analysis of what the cost benefits are. And, uh, and really take a deeper dive into this and, and, uh, again, uh, a recurring refrain, uh, given that we have limited uh, aims in our basket, um, perhaps we revisit this at another time for the more fulsome analysis of the cost benefits.
Okay, Mr. Blackwell.
Thank you. So, um, what is my experience around these sorts of issues? Is that in order to bring the matter to the, the cross of the, of the question, you have to undertake a fire services review, which involves probably around fifty to sixty thousand dollars to hire a former fire chief to come in and look at size of the community, the roads, the water, the hydro pressures, the age of the fire hall, which by the way, if you're to replace is probably in the order of maybe ten million dollars.
Who's coming to suit.
FYI, right? Uh, and you, you will look at all of these things. You'll look at him, the, the insurance costs and he will say, or she will say, if you want to achieve X, then here are your costs going forward. If you want to achieve Y, here are the implications. Um, you're not required to handle fire service, um, but it will have significant implications on property insurance, on insurance, property insurance. But, um, you know, if council, I, I strongly suggest council consider doing a comprehensive review. Even if it simply confirms the status quo or some iteration of status quo, at least you have data-driven decision around that rather than just assuming. Uh, but if that is something you want to consider soon, then you're gonna have to have budget.
Okay, um, and I know there needs to be factored into that as well is the amount of time you spend on the highway. Um, is it fair? I mean, and I reason to do this because they have work to do, builds morale, it helps the train. I know there's all sorts of, it's not as simple as that, but I mean, I think there should be other levels of government that stay here as well. I mean, we, you know, we need safety protection on this highway and not the users, well, we're not the sole users. Certainly not even a large percentage of them.
Um, okay, that, that brings up a great topic. I, I like your suggestion. And, um, what you're saying is, is what would the cost of the province be if, if we were to go a different route?
Yeah.
And, and that may bring them to the table on helping out us on these thoughts. So I think, uh, my feeling is more data than Councilor Royer mentioned and others. Uh, I'm all for that study, whether we move forward or not.
If I could, ironically, the cost of the study would be roughly the same amount that's being asked for, for this, this housing. I'm not saying.
I think that makes more sense and money better spent long term.
Count, I'm good. Could I jump in here again? Uh, we, we talked about money for studies in a previous meeting regarding OCP review. Um, I think there's some, uh, discussion that could be had on whether we need a gold plated consultant or we could have staff prepare some preliminary numbers. But I mean, at, at a core start, I mean, certainly we could have some numbers done by staff, um, and just so we can start getting a rudimentary understanding of what the cost benefits are, uh, without throwing sixty thousand at a consultant. I mean, I think we could do something out of the gate.
Okay, council run.
Okay, um, I, I think the, the question is, how can we incentivize? How, how can we incentivize people to become, to come and, and look at the village? And I think we need to go back and look at that. I don't, I don't, I don't think this is the best way to do it. I don't know what the best way to do it would be. I don't see this as the best use of fifty thousand dollars. I also don't see the, a study at this, at this point in time as being the best use of fifty thousand dollars. So I would just like to, like this to, to defer and say, let's look at other, other possibilities. I think our fire department has worked extremely well for the community. I think we leave or off of our department with, with the provincial and federal governments by saying, you know, we punch a border away. We service the highway and I think it gets us in, in the door with other grants. And, and so I think it's, it's a bigger picture, uh, uh, situation here. But, um, I, I think, I think we need to, you know, sort of cast our minds to how, how can we? Everybody in their universe right now is looking for stuff.
Yeah.
You know, if you're in Hawaii, you're looking for stuff. So it's just another, another step in that. So we just need to look at, at some creative ways to get there.
I'm a huge fan of the fire department and I would hate to lose them in that. But I think understanding the numbers and, and doing a study on it doesn't hurt. And if it could bring the province to the table, because a huge amount of time is spent out there on the highway. Um, you know, or like this might taper itself many times over, sorry.
Yeah, sorry. I mean, just, just to be clear, I completely agree that the huge benefit having a fire department, they do a great job of, um, and with a little pay, they're a large volunteer. Or you're right, I'm not suggesting in any way, any, anything other than that, but I do think we need to step back and think about it. Um, and, and see if we can come out, look at different models, just out of the box thinking.
Mr. Blackwell.
It's a significant chunk of our budget.
If I could, um, further to Councilor Royer's comments, uh, this is an area of significant expertise. Uh, there are a lot of, uh, regulations associated with training and all kinds of things. Uh, this is something that staff couldn't even begin to weigh in on. You need a professional who lives and believes the rules, the regulations, the operational uh, mechanics of, uh, fire operations, rescue operations. If you want good, reliable, up to date, believable advice.
It also pulls in, uh, Britannia potentially and Furry Creek because they're expanding and they have questions about their fire department and where they're going in the future. And they did reach out to, uh, the, one of the directors reached out to me early on in, in the term. Uh, and so there is questions about, uh, you know, how this is gonna fit together and how the, the highway will be covered. But I, I'm a strong, like Councilor Abbott said, the, the promise should be coming forward and helping out with that highway.
But to, to Marcus's point, though, I think we, well, I'm speaking for him, he speaks for himself, but what I, what I'm thinking, um, he's saying is we need a more wholesome discussion on this. And to do that, starting point is a little more detail on how much we, what we spend in the fire hall. Um, and that we don't need to, and then decide whether we need to do a study. I mean, the first step, I think the first step is we have to do a study. The first step is, is make a conscious decision. Do we need a study? Because we haven't even got to that yet.
Uh, I have to tell, that's a priority of this year of, of right now, but, but it's certainly down the road. But I, I think we've got some really huge issues to, to address and, and I think this is working quite well.
So we're back to the bonus, the signing bonuses over six months. Do we want to mark that for now?
I think we're deferring from the currents that I hear.
Deferring?
Sure.
Yeah, okay. We'll defer that until staff comes back with some additional information on.
Way to put it on.
Yeah. Okay.
Better understand, Sherrock, next item.
Page twenty three, uh, or emergency program coordinator, uh, requests to increase, uh, the compensation from current. Ready for something individualized? Okay, um, why don't we take five minutes, right? And why can't you just, uh, just.
I'll use it as well if that's the case. Are you gonna do public participation?
All right, thank you. All right, uh, we'll move to public participation in, in August. Okay. Uh, if anyone on the line would like to ask a question or comment for the council. Okay, uh, motion to move into closed.
So most.
Okay, second. Second layer.
Uh, it's a bit, I've got my specified sections.
Okay, and we'll move into closed based on section B and C. So thank you very much for your participation and I don't see us reporting out without, to be wrong, you see uh, an opportunity to report out the vote.
I don't think so.
No, okay. So thank you very much, everyone. Good to take.